I make a motion for CIP 1A in the amount of $850,000. So.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and good to see you, Greg. Question in terms of PCI, I'll start with my PCI question. So I went through the most recent PCI report that the council received from your office, and there are obviously several roads that are lower than 50. Many of them will be addressed in the proposed $850,000 plan. My question is, from FY '24 to FY '28, it is the town, we anticipate the town will spend...
Point of order. We can only discuss the current fiscal year. I'm sorry.
I understand, but I'm...
We can't discuss the other ones because that's part of the process.
Can you stop my time, please? Okay, so, yes, I just ask the counselors, keep their remarks relating to the town for this fiscal year, thank you.
My question was going to be why it is not that amount for this fiscal year?
Sure. Well, our pavement manager program has identified 1.2 million as what we need to spend each year to maintain our PCI average above 70, which is kind of the goal, is an industry standard. Last year, we had approved in the CIP $810,000. We did not touch that last year when we repaved Flanders Road, Sandy Holland and London Road, and a couple others, because we still had a sufficient amount in our bond, our road bond program, so we used that up and that ran out, actually, this month it runs out, so we can't use that anymore. So that $810,000 is available to us. There's still two roads we have to do from last year, which is Bridge Street and Military Highway. Those are estimated to be around $405,000. So the difference is between the 810 that was approved last year and the 405 is 405, coincidentally. So we're able to take that 405 and reduce it from the amount that it's going to cost to pave these roads this year, and that brings us to the 850.
Okay, so in the, there was no road that was not completed from the FY '22 approval list?
Well, we haven't, we still haven't done Military Highway and Bridge Street. We'll be doing those this spring.
And those funds will not come from the 405? There's a...
Well, they come from last year's CIP approval, which was $810,000. So once we use, pave those two roads, we'll have a balance remaining from last year of 405, so we can essentially roll that over to this year's projects, so that, you know, we don't need to request the full 1.2 million. I'm just reducing, you know, the amount that we're going to spend this year on these roads by 405, and that's where I came up with the 850.
Understood. So in total, for the fiscal year, we'll be spending that $1,200. Excellent, and then I think that is all. Thank you.
All right. See no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 1A in the amount of $850,000. Counsel Borlon? We'll circle back. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerville?
Aye.
Melendez is a yes. Counsel Borlon?
Uh, yes.
That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. I make a motion for CIP 1B in the amount of $430,000.
Second, Baumgartner.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
Do we need to include in the motion if we want to use this as ARPA dollars?
Yes.
It'd be a follow-up. You first put the original number with no changes other than the original number, then you make an amendment, just like you would basically any other motion on other items?
Yes, so you'd have to make another motion, putting, changing the funding from capital reserve to ARPA. If you wish to do so. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. Can you give a little detail on this? And if it goes to ARPA, how that would impact what we're currently doing as well, with the funding for ARPA?
Sure. This is the traffic signal at the Cornech Road and Village Lane. It's about 30 years old. The town owns four signals. Three of them are fairly new, a couple of them are only a year or two old. So this one is, you know, it's beyond its useful life. It's difficult to get spare parts for it and to keep it maintained. We did approve funds, or the council approved funds last year for the design of this, which we hired a consultant, they went through, did the design. It's pretty much going into final design at this point. The cost estimates they came up with was the $430 for construction. And so we're planning on bidding it this summer for construction, fall, then possibly into spring of 2023. And this will include all handicap ramps, pedestrian signals, video vehicle detection preemption system. It's pretty much, you know, follows the state DVT guidelines.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, do you want to follow up on the ARPA?
Sure. The, some of the council members had, you know, I think we all, you know, of course, are cognizant of the assessment increases and potential impacts on property values. Some of the council members asked me to take a look at some scenarios where we potentially use some ARPA funds to offset CIPs, which has been given to the council. There's a variety of scenarios, but essentially, at a minimum, the one thing I do recommend is that at least $3.6 billion of the CIPs be funded out of general fund, because that's what it is this current year. You don't want to go backwards on what you're funding, because then you've got to make up for in the mill rate later. But barring that, it's pretty, they're flexible dollars, they're, you know, we're under that $10 million, so it's whatever the council wishes if they want to do that, you know.
See, you had highlighted, what is it, about $4 million that could be moved over to ARPA, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't even care. What I did first is, you know, so we're looking at the scenarios where I was asked to be approximately at, as much as we could. I first flagged things like parks erect that aren't a necessity, and things that we would have, you know, very much likely maybe use ARPA dollars anyways on, like Sutton Park. And then beyond that, trying to get to the amount of what I was asked about, then I then had to start filling in other things, and honestly, I was looking at some bigger tick, rather than have, you know, 30 small items, doing some bigger ticket items.
So you're suggesting, although you highlighted $4 million, you're saying that we should, that these $4 million can be moved out, and the other $4 million potentially stay there?
If you used about, just approximately $4 million of ARPA, which, these are just scenarios I was asked to run, so I'm not really making any recommendation, but that would fall under scenario one. If you used $4 million in ARPA funds here, and then another 1.4 potentially for the C-WALL, you'd be at a, instead of a 22.4 mill rate, you'd be at 21.21, which would be, instead of an average, with the 22.4 average increase for the, the increase for the average taxpayer would be about 13.81 percent. This would lower it to 7.76 percent. And then there's an additional kind of sub scenario, where if you wanted to raise the conveyance tax, that would lower it a little more by having more revenue.
All right, thank you. So can I make an amended motion? I make amended motion to move the $430,000 for item 1B to the ARPA funding?
Casiri, second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Casiri. $430,000 ARPA dollars, 1B. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I think this would help offset such a high increase for this year, and these are not reoccurring, this is not a reoccurring expense. And I do recall, speaking about traffic signals and how expensive they are, it is a necessity, and if it would be covered by ARPA, I think it should go there. Thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. So I guess my question for the town manager first, are there other CIPs that you're flagging for ARPA as well, or your recommendation or thought process?
Well, I was asked to see what scenarios, to get as close to a 5% increase for the public as I could. However, if we dip, at a minimum, we need to spend $3.6 million of general fund on CIPs, because otherwise, we're going backwards, and we're already not funding enough as it is. So using that logic, it would, it results in about $4 million in cut, $4 million in ARPA dollars here, and 1.4 under the city, so essentially, I just had to back those numbers in, starting with parks erect type of items first, since those would be things we would, you know, are more sort of what we'd originally envisioned ARPA dollars for. But yes, there's, I sent an email yesterday with the list, and I resented today. I know you're, I know you're busy out of town, so I might not have had a chance to look at it.
I just, I mean, the day before meeting is just very inefficient to review, even if you have to work. So it's, it would be great to have had this stuff, so we can review this ahead of time, if that was your thoughts. I think it's a great idea. It's just, the day before, again, doesn't equate to...
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
You know, being able to get it in the timeline, thank you.
The timeline of that has nothing to do with the budget item we're talking about?
I would like to say, I was only asked at the end of the night, on Tuesday night, to run it, so I only had yesterday to run it. It took all day, the entire day, to run those numbers for Sunday night.
That's correct.
I just think it's tough, because we really, I haven't seen the whole ARPA plan yet, so it's hard for me. I think it's a great option, but even in the email that you sent, the big picture, it's just, we've had no, you know, public input on ARPA dollars to an extent, other than the surveys, so it's kind of hard to really get a gauge on any of this. And I can respect when you sent it, that's fine, but it's, there's, the big picture here is, I, I'm just not seeing it. Thank you.
Counsel Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hanover, what would be the lifespan of this traffic signal change?
Probably another 30 years.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Burt, for coming up with that scenario for us at the last minute.
Counsel Baumgartner?
So to clarify, we are determining items tonight to be funded by ARPA, or we're deferring items to be considered for ARPA funding in the future?
That's really up to the council. However, some of these things, you're not going to want to defer some of these things, you'd have to rethink it.
And I only ask that because if we're determining how we intend to spend ARPA funds, we have not posted such a meeting, we have not spread awareness in the community about how we intend to spend those dollars. And I'm not against spending ARPA funds, you know, to fund critical infrastructure projects, but I do believe that we should perhaps defer those supposed items to be considered for ARPA, that we do not approve for CIP. So I struggle with how we can entertain a motion to fund something directly by ARPA, when, again, our, the Long Term Recovery Committee hasn't even presented as to, you know, their intentions for the funding, their funding plan. So with that, I will make a motion to fund traffic signal replacement and upgrade exclusively from the Capital Reserve Fund of the amount of $430,000?
That's the main motion.
Point of order.
That was, that was the first motion, and this is the amended motion.
Did you, you say that, did you specify Capital Reserve Funds?
Yeah.
Did you state that?
In our budget book, that's the funding source.
Did you state that?
It would come from Capital Reserve, that's where it's from.
I understand, but the budget book that we received, the highlighted page that we received from the town manager was for ARPA funds?
He's going off the one, though, in the actual budget book. You have to start with the original number, whatever's in the budget.
In the manager's budget.
We don't specify a budget.
But again, in the initial motion, did you specify $430,000 to be funded by the Capital Reserve Fund? I don't believe you did.
So we can have Lori, when I move $430,000?
You move the total number.
When, when you moved the $430,000, if you look right beside there, it says C. C is Capital Reserve Fund. So you've already moved your number to come from the Capital Reserve Fund. So that initial motion, that first motion, the number put on the floor, would come from the Capital Reserve Fund. Then you have one amended motion, and that motion is to change the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I fully understand, however, I highly implore the council this evening to be very specific in terms of where those funding sources will be coming from. Thank you.
Counsel Westerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this project include milling and paving of the intersection, or is it just signal replacement?
Just signal replacement, some curbing, sidewalk, handicap ramps, crosswalks, but no actual milling and paving of the road itself.
I'd like to make an amended motion to move this number to four, excuse me, to $380,000.
All seconded for discussion purposes.
Okay, and just for clarity, is this ARPA or general reserve, Capital Reserve?
For ARPA funding.
Okay. $380,000 of ARPA funds, CIP 1B, moved by Westerville, seconded by Baumgartner. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. I realize that traffic signals are extremely expensive, and I've been working in this industry for over 20 years, knowing what a new signalized intersection is in various areas of the state. I believe that $430,000 is a bit much, so that's why I moved the number to 380.
Thank you. Counsel Casiri?
Director Hanover, is this the amount of money you need to fulfill the CIP?
Well, the 430 I got is from our consultant engineer, based on recent bid prices, and this equipment is just very expensive. You know, I was shocked at the price, too, but they assured me that this is, you know, what they're getting for prices now.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. I guess I'm still just confused about the process, so if we vote on the amounts that have been identified for ARPA, then we won't vote on it again under ARPA funding, or wouldn't it make more sense to defer tonight, to not fund this under general, and then bring it back up under an ARPA budget session? That's my question to the town manager.
If the council approves it tonight, then it'd be similar to when you've approved other things outside of that process, like for human services. Now, with something critical infrastructure like this, if it wasn't going to be decided tonight, I would recommend leaving it in the CIP, under the general fund, the Capital Reserve Fund.
Yeah, I'm all for funding it under the ARPA if we can, but I do, again, think that we're deflecting from the agenda, and nobody that's watching or was planning to watch even knew that we were going to distinguish money for ARPA. I can respect the fact that the email came through, but it didn't go up on the town page. It's not on the agenda, so I kind of feel like we're operating outside of our purview there, possibly. So I feel uncomfortable voting on something like that. But if we were to vote to defer, and state that we want to defer possibly to ARPA funding, and we actually had a session to review the deferments for ARPA funding under other CIPs, then we could, I just feel that ARPA, there should have been some plan and forethought or collaboration to get the public's involvement about ARPA, as well as the council, to see how we wanted to handle this. The email the night before, and I just don't see the direction of the big picture here. So I, if I do not support ARPA, it's not that I don't think the funding should go there, it's for the lack of information and a master plan here that we're lacking, again. Thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for the town manager. We took the exemption, I believe, for the...
You'll be voting on it, yes, we're taking the exemption.
And that allows us a lot more freedom in how we spend the money.
I need to cover human services.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counsel Casiri?
Point of information? I don't know, what exemption are we discussing?
Originally, when the draft rule came out for the ARPA dollars, you know, you had very, you had a lot of restrictions on what you could use the funds in. By the time the final version came out, they included a $10 million kind of, after we get... Center deduction, basically, up to $10 million, use it on whatever you want. It's no longer had to follow all the individual category restrictions. Of course, we don't get $10 million, so it'd be for our 8.6.
Thank you.
Counsel Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Jones asked my question, thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. So to the town manager again, so under that new designation, you're stating this would be the proper process to do so?
The council can do whatever process they would like.
I guess I'm looking for direction, as you're the one who sets the budget and prepares it for us, looking for guidance, since, you know, you proposed it in the email, so you brought up a suggestion, and so I'm trying to understand what your idea was.
And again, I didn't propose it, I was asked to put that, those scenarios together, but about a third, almost exactly, a third of these are flagged for potential ARPA. If you delay, that's just, there's a lot of critical things under there. I think, you know, like town hall, complex boilers, you know, that's in there. Some of those things, we're not going to be able to defer all these, so if you, you know, if you want to defer, you're going to have to start backing out some of this and not do so much deferred. So it's entirely up to the council.
So if it's entirely up to the council, I think we should have a structured meeting for this. It would make sense to me that we should defer doing these until we sit down and figure out, like, how we can do this with the ARPA. I mean, it's not on the agenda, hasn't been discussed, the public is not aware that we're even considering it for capital funds tonight. I feel like we're just, again, I'm having trouble operating under... And then you're saying it's up to the council, but there's been no formal discussion where any counselors have been able to, you know, have an agenda item or special meeting to move this along. I think that that should be considered. I don't think we should delay on these capital funds. I think it's urgent, but I think that we're, I'm concerned, fiscally being fiscally responsible with no master plan, no discussion, no meeting, and no umbrella of how we're going to move forward with this, is, it just seems like it's a little unorganized for me. So if that's the way we're going to operate tonight, then I'm going to abstain from these, and I agree that we should move forward, but then I think we should consider ARPA funds under a second, another section. I just don't feel comfortable operating like this. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Thank you. I do want to disclose, I support the initial motion on the floor to utilize the existing Capital Reserve Fund to fund these projects. I would agree to an extent that, you know, we have had a very robust process on devising a plan on how, as to how we spend those ARPA funds. Groton will be afforded, I believe, 8.6 million in ARPA funds, and we've hired a coordinator, I was actually, I was here earlier this evening, an ARPA coordinator, who's led a public outreach process as to how we spend those funds. The Long Term Recovery Committee has met for well over a year, discussing specifically and devising a plan as to how do we spend ARPA. So while I don't necessarily disagree with allocating ARPA dollars for capital projects, I do feel like it should, those, a lot of those projects should be vetted in more in-depth than in a separate meeting, and so I'd really caution the council from voting to direct the town to spend half of those funds this evening, when, you know, we hired somebody to run this process, so I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Counsel Franco?
So on the proposed number of $380,000, would you be able to complete this project with that money? Or would there be items that you would have to take off the table?
The raw cost, without any contingency, is estimated 390, so assuming the bids came in really good, and I didn't run into any issues during construction, theoretically, yes, we could do it for that. But, you know, we always like to have at least a 10% contingency, you know, if we run into any issues when we're excavating, or on the other unforeseen conditions, so that's where the 430 comes from.
And does this cost, this covers the raw cost and labor in this number?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'd like to actually speak on using ARPA dollars. So we could put in the 8 million into the budget and increase taxes, and, or we could put some of this into the ARPA funding, where we have the ability to do so and decide if we want to start using some of that tonight. And I think some of the comments that I've heard from residents, they're very concerned about the potential of a large tax increase. And the ARPA funding, it can be used in a multitude of ways, and if we choose to use some of it tonight, I think that would be prudent to hold the taxes down for many residents across Groton. So I, although it would be ideal if we didn't have to use ARPA, if we didn't have potentially $8 million sitting here that needs to be funded, or is requesting to be funded, because I'm sure there's some in here that will, that could be cut down to zero. I think, for me personally, I think it's prudent to worry about people's taxes as well, and I think ARPA can be used to help alleviate some of those people that are struggling right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Parker?
When ARPA came out, part of the, the potential requirements before they changed it was infrastructure. Many of these items are infrastructure items that we would have had to do anyways through ARPA funding. I agree with lowering the taxes, and this is one way of doing it. I understand everyone's concern about having a formal meeting about ARPA funds, but we did have outreach many times, many of them I've attended. They did say they were looking for more parks, upgrading our parks and other things that, infrastructure-wise. So the bridges and other things. So if we can use the funds now and we can decide on the source of it, where it can come from, I think the, very, it's very important to make sure that we're listening to the residents. So if ARPA funds can help with that, we should be able to use it. We are the ones who will ultimately have to tell the first ARPA coordinator where to put those funds. We can tell her right now, or him, I don't know if it's a him or her, I forgot. We can tell them right now as we're doing the budget season. ARPA funds is part of a budget. Everything we're doing is budget. So this is, right now, we're discussing where we can put the money and the funds from. So I think we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to align my comments along with Counselor Franco and Counselor Parker. Uh, one of the main questions that people have been asking over the last couple of days as they become aware of the tax increase is the amount that has gone up and what can we do? How can we bring that down and bring it down to a reasonable level? And, um, working with the town manager, I think he put together a pretty good plan of a balance of looking at our general funds, taking this money that we have, that as Counselor Parker says, most of it, a lot of it needs to go for infrastructure anyways. And we've kind of done a nice balance and we still have a reserve, a great reserve of our funds to fund many other projects. Um, but people are really concerned about the tax increase. We, we can't bring it all the way down, but we can bring it down to a, a pretty decent level that I think we can pretty much feel comfortable with, that, that we can pass on to the residents. So I support using the ARPA funds. I know we have a variety of projects in here and we'll, that we're going to, to use them on, but it, it, it helps the overall health, the financial health of the community and all the people in it. So, um, I'm going to continue to move forward with using that money. And I think that's a good way to go and, and thank the, the town manager who put in a lot of work over the last couple of days crunching all these numbers and getting different scenarios to us to, to help us figure out which is the right way to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Westerveld?
Again, the, um, this traffic signal, does, uh, the town of Groton have a traffic signal system? Do they have a monitoring system for the traffic signals?
No, they're all just individual signals.
Okay, so they're isolated intersections and there's no communications then?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. See no other discussion. I'll call for a vote on CIP 1B in the amount of 380,000 ARPA dollars. Counsel Bordelon?
Abstaining.
Counsel Brumgardner?
Abstaining.
Counsel Casiri?
No.
Counsel Franco?
No.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counsel Westerveld?
Aye.
Melendez is a no. That fails one in favor. Westerveld? Five opposed, two abstaining Bordelon, Brumgardner. Okay, on to CIP 1B in the amount of $430,000 of ARPA funds. Counsel Bordelon?
Just clarifying, you said 430 out of ARPA, is that correct?
That's correct.
I, I abstaining.
I have a point of information. I am so sorry.
Point of information during a vote. That's correct. Counsel Brumgardner?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerveld?
No.
Melendez is a yes. So that carries six in favor, uh, one opposed, Westerveld, one abstaining Bordelon.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
If we use ARPA funding for this and there is dollars left over, where do the, where would that money go?
ARPA dollars? It'll stay in the ARPA fund to be distributed through the process we've discussed with the, with that grant application?
So if the traffic light doesn't get done for maybe 10 months from now and there's money left over-
It's, it's still ARPA dollars, yeah.
And it goes back and can be distributed back out to the community? Thank you.
I'll make a motion. Um, I will make a motion to fund, uh, the Groton Long Point Bridge reconstruction, uh, to the tune of 280 million from the federal local bridge program and 70 million from the-
Thousands.
Capital Reserve Fund.
Thousands.
I'm sorry. That'd be quite a bridge. 70,000 from the, I'm sorry, uh, to, so I'll restart. 280,000, um, from the federal local bridge program and 70,000 from the capital reserve fund for a grand total of $350,000.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Brumgardner, seconded by Casiri. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So we funded this in the past and what we're currently looking to fund is the final design and obtain all necessary permits. And construction is expected to be done in 2020, FYE 24, 25. Um, what was the actual final design and how was that chosen?
Well, we actually haven't finished, um, the final design. We've got the preliminary engineering, preliminary designs done. And I was hoping we could actually come back to the council, the comm meeting to present, um, before this budget meeting, so you'd know what we were looking at. Um, but we haven't, just haven't had a chance to do that. So I'm hoping in the next month or so, couple of months, we'll be able to come before you. Um, so the funds we're requesting are for the permitting and the final design. But, you know, we won't proceed with that until, you know, we get the council's concurrence of what, um, we're proposing. Um, you know, we're also planning to hold another public informational session this summer, you know, once we get the, the preliminary, uh, design approved. Um, we've had numerous public informational meetings over the years, but we just want to get one last one in before we go into final design. So this will take us, you know, through the permitting final design, which is probably the next, oh, year and a half or so. Um, and then the construction will be 24, 25, and maybe even into 26.
All right. I appreciate that, um, because I know that there were many public presentations. And when you come to present, you will give us what the input you received from the public on choices that they, they preferred. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Brumgardner?
Yes, I would just like to acknowledge, um, the various, uh, committee members of the Groton Long Point Bridge Task Force, if you will. Um, you know, and, uh, obviously, you know, leadership of the Groton Long Point Association, town staff, and then town government have been hard at work, uh, meeting over the last, uh, over, well over a year, uh, discussing, um, some of those preliminary designs and, um, you know, that's eliciting public feedback. And, and so, um, you know, I think having those, like dialogue between, you know, subdivision in our town is very important, um, in terms of the, getting a, a, a really wonderful finished product. So I just want to acknowledge all those participants and, uh, and look forward to supporting this request this evening.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Hanover, can you just talk a little bit about the federal loan bridge program? How does that, um, so they're paying the, the bulk of this, of the engineering?
Yeah, they, they cover 80% of the cost. And it's actually, it's a, um, it's a reimbursable grant. So we have to, you know, fund it upfront and we get reimbursed as the project moves along. But because we use the qualifications-based selection process to select the engineer back, gosh, eight years ago now, I think it is, um, we actually can get reimbursed for all those costs that we've paid for over the last eight years or so at 80%.
And will they also pay for the 80% on the, on the final construction of the bridge too?
Yeah, yep.
So all the way along, we're, basically they're covering the 80% of the cost of the bridge?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything we have to do that's special to be in that program or is it?
There are some requirements asked to meet as far as the width and the length and whatnot for the bridge itself. But, you know, our design engineers are well aware of those and, you know, to incorporate all those elements into the final, or into the preliminary design, I should say.
So it's kind of a no-brainer. Just, just do it.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
All right. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote on CIP 1C in the amount of $350,000. Counsel Bordelon? All right. Counsel Brumgardner?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerveld?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. Counsel Bordelon?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm going it out. Can you restate what we're voting on?
Uh, CIP 1C in the amount of $350,000.
And is this coming out of any ARPA funds or just general fund?
It's not. No ARPA funds.
I'm a yes.
Okay. That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. I'll make a motion for CIP 1E.
75,000.
In the amount of $75,000.
Second, Parker?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So the request for 23 is, um, 75,000 to hire a consultant to prepare a concept plan for the reconstruction of the road and to conduct a public engagement program. Um, so this is the main street in knowing. And I've been down there and I have heard residents talk to me about it. Are they going to also look at the sidewalks as well as the road?
Yeah, this is the total road reconstruction project we're looking at here, not just repaving. You know, the, the PCI on this road is, I think, one of the worst in the town, actually. There's just some sections are like a 21. So, and the sidewalks are not very good, to be polite. Um, the drainage is very spotty in sections. So this is to look at, you know, completely doing sidewalks drainage. Well, for the whole road. And, you know, obviously there's going to be a lot of public involvement. Um, so we're just, at this point, just getting a consultant to do some concepts and kind of help us through, you know, what the residents are really looking for down there.
Thank you. I, I agree it's in some dire need. Thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hanover, are there any, if the, this includes going all the way down the hill down to the water, right? Main Street runs all the way-
Yeah, it runs all the way to the town dock at the bottom of the hill.
Is there any special considerations for, you know, stormwater and such that runs down that hill? Is that something-
Um, we'll look at that. And right now, we do have some storm separators, um, to take out all the sand and the gross particles as, um, when we redid that parking lot several years ago. Um, so we do have some systems there now, but, you know, as part of the project, you'll definitely look at the whole drainage system on that street.
Because it's pretty, must be a pretty intense amount of water that comes down-
Yeah, it's a pretty steep hill.
Okay.
Counsel Brumgardner?
Yes. Um, for C constru- on, um, on column, I'm sorry, not column, uh, row C construction, sort, there says, it says sources of funds, uh, potentially funded by general obligation bonds. Um, and then also in the request, uh, design funds will be programmed in FYE 24 to prepare a design to that detailed cost estimate can be provided for a potential bond referendum. Um, that, why would it be, uh, there'd be a bond referendum for-
It's really going to depend on the size of the project and what it ends up costing.
And it, but these are, this, um, CIP in and of itself is a project that could be funded by, um, the capital reserve fund, correct?
The, the construction of it?
Yes.
I, yeah, I don't know what the cost is going to be. I know that, you know, there's a certain point in time where, you know-
Yeah, if it's 5 million, we'd have to bond it likely, whereas if it's a million, then we could pay for it. All depends on where it comes out. They don't know at this point.
And we'll likely get a better picture of the, the cost after-
Yeah, yeah.
This CIP is approved.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote on CIP 1E in the amount of $75,000. Counsel Bordelon? Counsel Brumgardner?
Aye.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerveld?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. Counsel Bordelon? All right. You're muted, Counsel Bordelon, if you're voting.
Sorry, connection problem. Can you just restate the number and if it's coming out of ARPA or contingency, please? Thanks.
75,000 out of contingency. Uh, out of, out of capital, out of capital reserve.
I'm in favor, yes.
That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Make a motion for CIP 1F in the amount, in the amount of $920,000.
Let's, let's, what should we do? Do we even have a number right now? Like, like Greg, uh, just, because this was essentially put in as a placeholder. You know, we do this months, you know, quite a while ago. So it's a placeholder. We know now that Stonetown, uh, is not funding any of their part.
Okay.
1.2 million.
1.2.
Half of which, though, would be from the-
From the, yeah, state local bridge fund.
Okay. So I make a motion for CIP 1F in the amount of $1,200,000.
Casiri, second.
That's from capital, uh, that's from-
Now, if you do it out of capital, that'll put us, you know, further behind versus our budget, you know? We don't have anything in there for capital.
Is this all coming out of town, Stonetown and local bridge program? It's next to the O.
The 1.2 million, 600,000 would be from us, depending if you wanted out of CIP, out of capital, or if you wanted out of ARPA.
Okay, so make the motion, $1,200,000 out of capital reserve fund, so much-
Oh, half. Remember, half is the local bridge program.
Okay. I make a motion for $1,200,000, 600,000 from capital reserve fund, 600,000 from local bridge program.
Casiri, second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Casiri. Counsel Parker?
So, my question's for, uh, Mr. Burt. So if North Stonetown is not funding, but we hold it, can we just hold it until they make a decision about doing it?
You can hold it for five years.
Five years? Okay.
Right. And just as a reminder that- Right. And just as a reminder, that $600,000 is not reflective of that total in that Capital column.
But we have to approve the whole 1.2 million in order to...
Right. I'm just saying, like, if, say, 8.1 at the bottom, it'd be 8.7 and change out of Capital.
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
Well, right now, we don't have, we have zero under Capital, so if you add $600,000 to that, it reduces that, if you were doing 8.1, it would mean you were $600,000 worse off, because it's not in there. So you'll only stay even if you did it with ARPA dollars or some other funding.
He's speaking, you're speaking about on page 209, Capital Reserve Fund, at the bottom of the column, it's $8,136,000, and if we added $600,000 to this, that would be 800.
Because there's no number in there at all for the bridge.
It'd be $8,736,000.
I saw before, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you explain why there's the difference in here? Well, the $20,000 and the $900,000 under other, because there's now $100,000 more. Why are we doing 1.2?
I think someone in the planning department, when they updated us, it must've got put in there. So the 1.2, was it divided?
And if we don't fund this now, we can worry about that later? Would that affect us?
If you don't fund it, if you, if you don't fund it now, it's just like we have the other years, it would hold off until whenever you do take action.
Okay. And we've, we've confirmed with North Stonington, they're not funding it.
Stonington, not North Stonington, but yes.
Stonington, I keep saying North Stonington.
Yes, Stonington has confirmed they're not, this year.
I'd like to make a motion, new motion, amended motion?
What's your motion?
I make a motion for $0.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Melendez.
Oh.
Okay, Franco. $0 moved by Parker, seconded by Franco.
My rationale is, at this time, Stonington's not ready, and we are not ready.
Okay. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I have a question for the town manager. Should the town utilize ARPA funds to pay for this bridge? Are there any issues in terms of receiving the state, the state grant?
I wouldn't think so. The one thing to keep in mind, though, for, you know, you know, five-year CIP, you know, in terms of holding it over, we can't really, you know, we still have the ARPA deadlines for spending that money, so it gets a little more complicated than usual with the ARPA dollars.
And should we utilize ARPA or make that determination tonight, and come to find out we cannot, the town could always make a supplemental appropriation in, say, mid-year? So, but it's your understanding that it could be, ARPA could be...
I think what Greg would check is to make sure that counts as matched towards the local, which it should be an issue, but we have to double-check. We can't say 100%.
Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion. I would like to, I'd move that we utilize $600,000 from ARPA and $600,000 from the local bridge program for the purposes of constructing the North Stonington Bridge.
Is there a second?
Casiri will second.
Moved, CIP 1F, $1,200,000, $600,000 from local bridge program, and $600,000 for ARPA, moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Casiri.
Can I just mention one thing?
Yes.
Just to mention, you know, you can do it, we just have that one extra step of, we'll have to have that agreement with Stonington that we're going to pay for it, which I'm sure they'd happily do. But just to mention, that's one step we have to do.
Okay, so I have a question. So voting for this would be us paying for our portion and Stonington's portion?
Correct.
Okay. I will not be supporting this at this time.
Okay.
I'd like to speak on the motion.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you. I stand in strong support of this motion. I will note that this is a council that has several members of District 5. It's certainly a welcome change, and it's, I think, really outstanding to have voices from the northeastern corner of town. I think a corner of town that has been largely ignored in terms of investment for infrastructure dollars. As, you know, Counselor Casiri, as mentioned, in her short time so far on the council, this bridge is incredibly important in terms of public safety, in terms of ensuring that our fire department has enough clearance to safely navigate very tight roads, and get to respond in a expeditious manner to crises. So I would, I do believe out of any capital project proposed in this budget book, the one project that is the most justified to be funded by ARPA is the North Stonington Bridge, in large part because there are no, this item, as the manager mentioned, did not have an existing appropriation out of the Capital Reserve Fund. Therefore, we would not be adding to the, to the cost of the, you know, to this existing budget, should we utilize Capital Reserve Funds. Well, I respect the mayor's choice to, you know, to not support this. I would note that, you know, but though I know he does support constructing the bridge, I think his concern is mainly with, and I don't want to speak for him, but mainly with perhaps Stonington not kicking in some dollars for that bridge. And I will know that we have been kind of cankicking on this project for some time. I think Stonington has made it abundantly clear that they are not interested in funding this project in the short, in the short term and near term. But however, public safety cannot wait, and the overwhelming majority of folks who would be impacted by the reinvestment in this bridge are Groton residents. And so I enthusiastically support this motion. We voted, I think we deliberated on this, this CIP throughout my entire time on the council, and let's get it done this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you. Mr. Hanover, can you, you had put this in here as a placeholder for tonight, or for this, in this budget, you had put this into?
Well, I had told, rather than, because I told the planning just to put a placeholder in, because you can't add something as a CIP during the budget process without going through the Planning and Zoning Commission first, so it had to be on that list to them. So I just had to put it as a placeholder, so you'd have the option of doing whatever you wanted to do.
So were you prepared tonight to, to support putting this bridge in?
Yeah, I mean, I could talk to it, give you information on it.
Or just, okay. And I know that, that 1.2 million dollar number has floated around for a couple of years. Do you think it's still that much money? I know in RTM, two years ago, we were talking about that same number, so...
Yeah, I mean, I have not talked to the consultant on the cost estimate in a year or so, so, but it was still a valid number not too long ago.
Too long ago. And, town manager, can you just talk about what the, what Counselor Parker's dollar does? What does that, putting that motion do? What does that?
Say it again?
What, can you just tell me what the, putting a dollar, a motion for a dollar in does on this?
Zero.
Does it just hold?
Putting a dollar in?
I mean, not a dollar, a zero dollar.
A zero?
Zero dollar.
Um, it's dead for the year, because the RTM can't override, you know, they can't go beyond both the council and me if we have, you know, don't have the number in there for it.
So it just keeps...
So it'll be done for the, yeah, it'll just be done for the year.
Unless you came back later for some sort of other supplemental appropriation, of
course.
So it's just a way of holding something without...
Basically, zero is turning it down for this year.
Okay. But it doesn't kill it. That's, that's what it does. Keeps it there, but doesn't kill it. Okay.
I mean, doesn't, it's not like one of those things where you have to have, you know, six votes to bring it back up or anything. It's been turned down many years, so...
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So I've been on the council for four years now, and Stonington has not had funded this the whole time we've been on, and if they had, we probably would have funded it. What is Stonington's portion that they would be covering?
Forty percent. It's a little bit over, if I remember correctly, you know, because there's a proration to it involving, I think, its population. It's somewhere around 42 percentage, somewhere in that ballpark. I can't say 100%, but it's somewhere around there, I believe.
So their portion would be somewhere maybe about $500,000. And Groton, with this motion on the floor, is basically saying we would cover all of it at 1.2 million. I have heard from numerous residents who have heard previous councils say we should fund the whole thing, and I have heard a resounding, do not do that with my taxpayer dollars. I cannot support this at the full dollar amount as it's stated. If Stonington was going to put up the money, I would absolutely fund it. So I also do not want to put up a dollar amount and have it sitting for potentially five years and have Stonington not fund it for the next five years and just have the money and, you know, sitting in basically the savings account waiting for Stonington. I think we usually find out what their budget is first and how they voted on it, and then we have the opportunity to make, put the number on the floor and do it then, when they allocate the funding. I realize the safety issues, but also I think this has been seven years that that bridge has been, really, actually, going back farther, it's from 2010, the bridge has been out, and this has been going on for a very long time. But I am not comfortable funding this 100%. So I will be supporting a $0. Thank you.
Counselor Westerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe in addition to the public safety with response times for the vehicles leaving those areas, the increase in traffic has made it much more difficult for the trucks themselves to get through these locations. So it's safety of the crews that are driving those trucks trying to get to these locations and being delayed. The cost of a fire apparatus is incredible, and it's just, this is something that's needed doing for the last 12 years, and I think if we wait, we're only asking for it to get worse. So I absolutely support this.
Counselor Bordelon?
Yes, thank you. I'm in full support of funding that bridge, and I think it's long overdue to be done, and it's unfortunate that we're constantly going back and forth over this. But it was stated as we asked for a meeting, and Stonington would not support funding whatever percent was determined as their responsibility. I do think it's important that we could fund this under ARPA dollars that would not affect the taxpayers' numbers, but again, there's been no master plan, no meeting to discuss ARPA funds, and so I do not feel comfortable at this time doing such. I also do not feel comfortable without getting a consensus or a pulse on our community when funding an entire bridge with ARPA dollars that were designated for the town of Groton on the Groton side, also concerned with the money sitting there and, and just being held without the ability to access funds, and Stonington's already saying they're not funding it. I just, I'm concerned again, what direction are we going? What is our plan? I think the bridge should be done. I think we should, you know, fund the, our portion of the bridge when Stonington's ready to fund their portion, or we should have a meeting to negotiate and put that out to the public and see what their thoughts are on it first. Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
I have a concern. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. ARPA funds is federal dollars, correct? Most of the time, you have federal dollars and a state program. I don't think you can do them both at the same time. So hence my zero thing, and I'm afraid that if we use, can't use the ARPA funds, we're going to have to fund it ourselves if we approve it tonight. And normally, federal dollars and state dollars, you can't co-mingle grant money, because technically, this is like similar to grant, in my head, like grant money. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, but if, I could ask Director Landry if that sounds right. Normally, you can't co-mingle programs.
I agree that we would have to look into that. I know that the federal, the ARPA dollars does have a provision about using it for matching funds for other grants, so we would have to look into that, if we could, if we still be entitled to the local bridge grant if we used federal dollars.
So if we approve or make a vote on this tonight, then we can always reconsider later on? Can we do that for that, until we find out if we can use the ARPA funds for it? Because if we can't use ARPA funds, then we'll be funding it, the 1.2 million, and I don't feel comfortable doing that without having Stonington involved. Thank you.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we aware if Stonington has utilized their ARPA dollars yet? Mr. Burt?
I, my feeling, I can't say, I think they have, but I, that's a very weak, yeah, I think they have.
Okay. I was going to be in favor of supporting this motion tonight. However, with the information that Counselor Parker just brought forward, I do not want to put us in jeopardy of supporting something that could potentially cancel each other out. I do want to call attention to the fact of the public safety hazard that this bridge being out has caused for the past 12 years. I have numbers in front of me from 2020, and I know that Chief Richards had updated us, and I don't have those numbers, so I apologize. So they had responded to 1,256 calls for service in 2020, and they had come to the Groton side of the bridge 409 times, and those numbers increased significantly after the pandemic. I also would just like to call attention to the fact that 100 local residents in 2020 signed a petition to have the bridge reopened, so there is significant support to refund this bridge. And we have an attorney opinion stating that the continued delay in the replacement of this bridge perpetuates a potentially life-threatening hazard to citizens of the town of Groton. So until we can figure out whether or not we can use ARPA money for this, I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. Again, I feel we're discussing things, but we're not sure. We have to wait. We're not sure if we can. And if we're not sure, maybe we shouldn't be considering it at all. And that is my concern. I'm worried about the legality of appointing ARPA funds to a bridge that is not fully supporting only Groton, because those funds were given to Groton, and Stonington has its own ARPA fund, so I'm concerned with that as well. Town manager, do you have any concerns or questions regarding that, or could you help me to understand how that could work basically under the designation from the federal government?
Well, I think we do need to figure out whether it can be used for a match, and I would think, so do you think we could find out by Saturday, by the next budget meeting? We didn't try to, you know, if you wanted to hold, you know, put this at the end of the CIP list, you're likely not getting through it tonight. It's up to you.
Great, yeah, because if we, if we don't know, I think that that's, that's a little concerning. I, I think, you know, for me, if we don't, if we can't use ARPA funds, which I had stated, there's been no plan, no master plan, no meeting, and I do not think ARPA funds should go to another town to cover up the difference of what they're not going to cover. I'm in full support of supporting this bridge. This bridge has been out for almost 20 years, I believe, and I've advocated and helped support, you know, trying to fund this bridge. But if Stonington outright is saying they do not have it this year, what are we doing? Why are we allocating funds and letting our tax rate grow up when there's options available that we can do other things, and I just holding funds is just not right? Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, as I mentioned, you know, obviously, the manager and Ms. Landry have been hard at work devising a plan, especially in the last couple of days, to adjust spending and to ensure that taxpayers don't have to shoulder the, the burden of a potentially larger spending increase. With that said, you know, I do believe that our council should be taking action on this item, as it is something that we've been considering for years. I would hope that should we not approve any funding, that we move on this item in a very expeditious manner. Again, we've been cankicking for years on the North Stonington Bridge. In my time in the council, I... In my time in the council, I have continuously and consistently supported appropriating dollars for this project when this project would be, funding for this project would be voted down. So I do want to state that on the record, and with that, given the guidance issued by Director Landry, I will rescind my motion.
Just to mention, assuming that you don't want to take it back up later, you can still apply through the application process for this, so that's, you know, soon you'll have another bite at the apple.
Or, or we could just decide we want to fund it.
Sure, sure.
You'd have the second rescinded as well?
Oh, I apologize, I rescind my second.
Okay, so we have the main motion of one million, two hundred thousand. That's not the first one we're going to vote on, just stating, we have the main motion of one million, two hundred thousand dollars from the Capital Reserve Fund, and then we have one amended motion of zero dollars. That's what's on the floor right now. And we will vote on that one first. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 1F in the amount of zero dollars. Council Borlon?
I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. This is the amended motion of zero, is that correct?
That's correct.
All abstained?
Council Baumgartner?
No.
Council Cassiri?
Yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a yes. So that carries five in favor. Two opposed, Westerville, Baumgartner, and one abstaining Borlon. I make a motion for CIP 1I in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second, Parker?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes, I'd like to commend the Groton Long Point Association for adhering to a longstanding practice of including their capital projects in the CIP as opposed to their operating budget for the, I think, in terms of accountability, in terms of oversight of how we spend our dollars, tax dollars. Just as a taxpayer, very much appreciate their efforts to, you know, respect the proper process that our own town goes through to approve capital projects. So I just wanted to state that on the record, and we'll be supporting their CIP request. It would be very easy for them to include it in a, you know, their operating budget request, and should be voted down, then it can get a little messy, but you take that risk and, you know, show, do the homework, show us, you know, how you intend to spend those dollars efficiently, and we appreciate that. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Not familiar with the roads in Groton Long Point. Are these roads that are right on the water, and are they flooded often?
Will we hear from Groton Long Point? They're not right on the water, no. They're more internal, as far as the flooding goes. I'd say North Street would not, because it's fairly high. Ridge Road, I'm not sure of.
I was just wondering, because I know usually when they're roads, some roads are flooded, they have to be paved more often to have a better surface, or maybe some different changes? Is that correct?
Yeah, we would do these roads, I mean, we, Public Works does the work for, oh, hey, Mike, Groton Long Point, so we would do the reclaiming and repaving process that we do on all their roads, we do them.
Okay.
Thank you for having me here at that point. Here is actually there, we have worked with private contractors doing our roads in the last, during the five-year bond issue for the budget, and working with the town and the PW Department and John and the town manager, we were able to use the benefit of our tax dollars as part of the three communities that put together the budget itself, and by doing that, actually, they are the cheapest cost, helping actually keeping the, the staff and everything actually in the project for doing the paving, and they becoming the cheapest cost of that point for us, which is great. And the quality has been beyond excellent. It really is, the staff they have there and the road crew they have is unbelievable. It really is, and the town would be commended by it. But again, actually, cost factor is a key issue right there, whether something, because we don't pay for the labor, we were able to use them at that point, because the labor comes out of the course, actually, the taxes we pay. Specifying the roads that we picked, because the three communities got together and did the roads project, meaning actually the quality of the roads through all three communities, these three roads right there were under the basically low number at that point, because it's deterioration. They aren't on the water, but one is on the marshes at that point, so you do have rise of tide, of course, at that point there for North Road. Over the years, we've actually been able to take the border roads and have them redone, because the town actually honestly have done such a great job. We don't have a washout on those roads at all. We had a bad situation last fall on the shore, and we're using funds separately from our funds to repair that, because the water did come over, but it's not the road itself, it's just the walls themselves. So the road quality is excellent. But again, these actually are the next roads to be done, because they're, they're under the fifty percent of that point quality, and that's why those were picked at that point.
The reason I'm asking is, there's been a lot about resiliency and sustainability and that, and that topic, and my question was pertaining, if there was a road that received a lot of water over it, is there anything that we can do to enhance the road to make sure that it will sustain for a longer period of time? I don't know anything about paving, so that was my question, to see if there was anything that we could do to keep it intact if it does get a lot of water.
The roads actually aren't our issue, they're walls, and those are the rock walls and the retent, retentment walls that have been done around Groton Long Point and have to keep increasing at that point. A large island circle project last couple of years showed the revetment walls and then the paving done afterwards. But again, the paving isn't the issue we're having there, it's increasing the structure of the walls.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 1I in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Council Borlon?
Aye.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Cassiri?
Yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Westerville?
Yes.
And Melendez is a yes, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero standing.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I make a motion for CIP 2A in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Second, Parker?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker.
Council Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hanover, can you just go over where these pipes need to be replaced?
Sure. This is up in the north central part of town, north of 184, very close to the Ledger Town Line, Quaker Farm Road. There's two five-foot diameter corrugated metal pipes that had deteriorated so badly they've actually almost fallen into the brucks of the road, so the road's been closed through traffic since 2017. We did have funding approved for a consultant, we, you know, hired that consultant, they've gone through a preliminary engineering study. We're going to actually replace those culverts with a twenty-six-foot clear-span bridge, primarily for environmental reasons and hydraulic reasons. It'll have a natural channel bottom. It's gonna, you know, more likely get a permit approval from the Army Corps and our local weapons, have it a natural channel bottom, and then it, we've also had issues with beaver activity, believe it or not, up there putting dams across these old culverts, so we're hoping that this wider structural prohibit that. We did get a commitment from the state for the fifty percent for the local, state local bridge fund, so the estimated cost is, you know, one point forty-two million, so the town's share would be seven hundred and fourteen thousand. The current schedule is, our consultant will be going to the DOT and the Army Corps for some permitting applications in May, then we'll have a public informational meeting early summer. We'll go to our own local in the weapons this summer and then bid late fall this year if we get approval. It's a, you know, that's a good time for bidding, because contractors are looking to line up the work for the following year, so we tend to get better pricing, and then we'd start construction spring of next year, 2023.
Does this actually replace the bridge as well?
Yeah, this, yeah, we just, we would remove the two culverts that have, you know, deteriorated and just put in a whole new bridge.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes. I have a question regarding the replacement, the study to replace the old stone culvert on River Road. Would that be funded by, I'm sorry, would, would that design work be done by town staff? Or an outside consultant?
You're talking about, oh, this is the project we're showing in FY24?
Yeah, yes.
I don't know at this point. It's possible it could be, but most likely be consulted, just because the permitting gets so convoluted, there's so many.
And you would argue two hundred thousand is the appropriate number?
That would be, yes, for the design and, and engineering.
All right, I'd like to move a new number.
That's, that's for next year.
That's for next year, not this budget.
No, I understand, but you, you can, you can still make a motion to shift, we've done this in the past.
Oh, you mean for the 741?
As long as it's included in the CIP. So I'd like to make an amended motion to fund the construction of the culvert rehabilitation, scheduled for this year, from Capital, the Capital Reserve Fund to the tune of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, and seven hundred and forty-one thousand for the state DOT local bridge program, and appropriate two hundred thousand of ARPA to conduct that study for River Road.
So your motion is one million? Yes, for six hundred and eighty-two thousand?
Yes.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
Was the two hundred thousand for?
It's FYE 2024.
We cannot do that.
And we actually just.
You had that discussion?
Yes, we did.
I missed that part, I didn't think we could, why would we?
One second.
Why would we discuss 2024 without doing 2023 first? I thought we couldn't do that.
I just didn't.
I'm, I'm just asking.
What's the number on the floor?
Right now, there's no second for one million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, but I'm gonna need an opinion from this session.
Sorry, just making sure. We don't see an issue with it, just as long as the motion says sixteen eighty-two with two hundred thousand coming out of the ARPA with, that project also will be into the twenty-three to be done?
So I have a motion for one million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second, Westerville?
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Council Westerville, for the second. This motion continues the existing construction schedule as outlined in the CIP for FYE 2023. The two hundred thousand would be, instead of it being funded through an unidentified source, likely the Capital Reserve Fund next year, it would be funded through ARPA dollars. We have until, and please correct me, Director Landry, we have up until 2024 to determine how we appropriate ARPA, and 2028 to spend those dollars.
Yes, those dates are correct.
And so, given that fact, we can, there really isn't a restriction in terms of when we should spend those ARPA dollars up until 2024. One thing I have heard on the council time and time again is, what are you doing about River Road, the flooding on River Road, and this will absolutely fast-track some, addressing some of those concerns that we've heard from so many neighbors on River Road. Again, this is not constructing, constructing the culvert, this is simply expediting the, the study to, that the town would engage in to replace that culvert on River Road, which will enhance resiliency, and again, mitigate the flooding, continue, continuous flooding issues we've seen on that road. So I would respectfully ask the council to support this amended motion.
Council Parker?
I believe you said, thank you, Mr. Mayor, two hundred thousand will be coming from the ARPA funds?
Yes.
And I had a concern lot from the previous item we just did, that this is coming from, can we confirm that we can do federal funds with a state local program? That was my question earlier, so we do not know if we can do that, we have to make sure we do not.
It's not a bridge.
It's a local other amount, seven hundred and forty-one thousand.
It's not part of that separate project for the two hundred thousand. We can do it with ARPA.
You can do the state local programs, the pilot program, DOT program?
Yeah, we're just, we're just hiring a consultant, yes.
Can we confirm this before we do it? I just don't want us to get in trouble with the federal funding that was coming from ARPA with the state of Connecticut's dollars.
Point of information.
What's your point of information? Council Parker has the floor.
But point of information.
Council Parker has the floor, will you yield the floor for his question?
Not yet. I just want the question answered first.
Well, it's not, we're not looking for reimbursement, we're not using it for a match, it was solely just, we're just hiring a consultant, that's it. I can't imagine how that would go in.
I believe that the way the CIP is written, that the state local bridge grant only applies to the bridge to replace the culverts, that we're not going to use what's being adopted here, local bridge money, to do the design for River Road. So I don't think there's, the seven, the fourteen eighty-two that's being approved would be applicable to the local bridge grant, the two hundred thousand dollars is not. You see, it's, it would be funding purely from the Capital Reserve Fund.
And we'll be able to check with the federal government to confirm we can do something like that, so it doesn't confuse the issue. I just want to make sure we don't get in trouble.
No, I, I completely understand, but I do think that the two hundred thousand is just coming from Capital Reserve. There may be next year, an opportunity to look at the state bridge grant, but if we were to use ARPA funds, then we'd have to address that at that time. But I am, am comfortable with the, with the two hundred, because it's only for the River Road, and we're not asking for local bridge fund at this point.
Thank you, I actually have a question. I remember there was, at one point, hearing that you also couldn't use ARPA funds for consulting, but then was that changed with the new rules?
No, it's any governmental service period.
Okay, thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this year we have an awful lot of stresses on our budget, and we've tried to find creative ways to, to help fund things. I would like to just stay in our own fiscal year, the 2023, and just do projects that we're doing this year and not, I know this is an important project, and it's slated to come soon, come the next fiscal year, but I'm gonna, I'm not, I cannot support this, this number, and I want to just stay in our own fiscal 2023 year and just focus on that year.
Thank you, Council Franco?
Thank you. So even if we use, I just want to clarify-
So even if we use, I just want to clarify myself, if we use money for planning and engineering, it would not impact the construction aspect of what we used funding for planning and, the planning and engineering. Is that correct?
I believe that the way the original narrative was written, the local bridge grant, and Greg, please correct me if I'm mistaken, only applies to the 1482.
Correct.
It does not apply to the 200, which we--
But if we apply next year for state local bridge--
We would, we'd have to see if--
See if we can get reimbursement.
No, what I'm saying is, like, in the future, in the next fiscal year, it's going to be determined what the construction is. And that's where we're going to apply for the bridge program. And will they say, well, wait, you used federal dollars for your engineering, you're not qualified now to join our program for the reimbursement of the construction.
I'd have to check on that. I don't believe there would be any caveat like that, but I would have to double check.
So when, like, let's just say, for the 741s, they don't look at how we get, we spend our money on the engineering. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Because that's the concern, I think, that I'm hearing, and that concerns me as well, is if they say, wait, you used federal dollars for your engineering, and then when it's time to build it and you're asking for the 50% from the, from them, they're going to say, wait a minute, you already used another source of funding for your engineering, we're not applying anything.
And we certainly, you know, check on it.
Yeah, we can check if, I don't think it's going to impact the construction, local bridge funding.
Okay.
Depending on what the source is.
All right, because I actually would be in favor of moving the 200 with the ARPA funding, because it'll ease a little bit from next year with the funding that we can use this year. That wouldn't be charging taxpayers. But I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't feel a lot of confidence in your voice.
But we would double check it.
I know you would double check it, but if we don't fund, like, so can we just, if it's, if you find out, can we take this out of the budget, like, potentially, could you find out by Saturday?
We can try.
So if we did pass this, let's just say we pass this, and you came back to us on Saturday, we can reevaluate this on Saturday's budget session.
Right.
If you--
And just keep in mind, let's say somehow you passed it and it didn't get brought back up, we would certainly check on it and just, you would just close it if you could--
We could close it and re-add it to next year's capital.
Right, right.
Thank you.
We're not going to proceed without knowing.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hanover, can you just speak as to why it was in the FYE 24?
Just because of, you know, trying to spread the budget out over a number of years and not really load it up, I just felt that we could wait another year on this project.
Okay, so it was just for budgeting purposes, not because of a particular timeline?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just a question for my clarification. If these are ARPA funds, do we need to commit to this tonight? Because we can, we can utilize the ARPA funds at a later date if we determine we want to use that 200,000, correct?
Yeah, if you keep it in here, you just have, if, let's say you want to do the project, you have to specify where the funding's going to come from in this budget. Without that, it's essentially not moving forward until you do an outside process.
But aren't the ARPA funds separate and distinct from an annual operating budget? So if this council decided it wanted to fund 200,000 of the ARPA money three months from now for planning of this project, it can do that without even approving this this evening?
They do either way.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be, there's no need to do this tonight because we can find out some additional information, because this council can decide to spend ARPA funds anytime they want over the next three and a half years. So I don't think the need is for this evening to rush into something. I'm a fan of the project, I just don't think it needs to be done this evening, because I agree with Councilor Jones' remarks that we're looking to refine and minimize, so I don't know why we would add it to this budget. Thank you.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes, and good to see you, Council McBride. I will note that earlier this evening, we appropriated 430,000 to fund the traffic signal replacement. So there is already now a precedent for the council to appropriate ARPA funds in lieu of appropriating funds directly from the Capital Reserve Fund to fund those projects. And we are likely to continue to do so in large part because the manager sent the council a document highlighting specific projects that could be funded by ARPA in lieu of the Capital Reserve Fund. And I've heard tonight is a lot of second guessing of town staff on this budget. I would note that if they say something, that they are saying so because they have the experience in dealing with this budget. And certainly, you know, our own personal opinions of certain expenditures should not, I think, hinder our judgment of town staff to make a sound recommendation to us. So I think the manager, Public Works Director and Finance Director have made it abundantly clear that ARPA could be used to fund the design work for a culvert. Now, Director Hanover, correct me if I'm wrong, culverts are not funded by the local, the local bridge state grant, that is, the bridge in and of itself.
No, if it's over six feet, even if it's a culvert, a pipe is defined as a bridge. So if it's over six feet wide, it would be considered a bridge under DOT's program.
Now--
And I don't know offhand what width of this existing culvert is, but we could make it wider than six feet, so.
And which brook?
It's right at the end of Binless Road.
And so is there currently any culverts that go through, are any, does Binless Brook go through any other culverts in town?
Further upstream, sure.
And again, this is not, this motion would not fund the construction project, it would simply fund the design work.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I just note that Council Boarderlon in the last little bit dropped off, no message, so I'm assuming maybe a, you know, internet issue. I'll let you know when she returns.
May I?
There was an email.
Otherwise, no.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay. So while we're doing that, when you get the time that Council Boarderlon dropped off, I will just note that Council McBride joined us at 7:21. Council Franco?
Thank you. I just wanted Councilor McBride to be brought up to date as he had just arrived, to see, like, some of the presidents that we've set and that, yes, we have, are, we are using a layout that the town manager had sent to us that has some highlighted areas of, that could potentially be used for ARPA funding if we so choose to. And with, you know, over $8 million in capital improvement projects, it was stated that many people would like us to try and reduce the budget as a whole to, for the impact on taxes, and he has sorted this out for potentially leaving 4 million in the Capital Reserve and potentially using about 4 million for ARPA. And so that's what we're, we're working on now with, so I just wanted to make sure you're up to speed. And if this 200,000 was going to be spent next year with actual Capital Reserve, I'm actually okay with it being used with ARPA and coming from a different source, so it's not, you know, just put onto the taxpayers next year. Thank you.
Just to point out, everything on that list would be eligible for ARPA. The goal was to get to, you know, was required, their request to me was to get to around this amount. So we started with the non-essential things like parks, the, the non-critical infrastructure, and then, and then worked my way back from there. So there, any of them can be done by, there's no, you know, using that under 10 million classification, so.
Council McBride, did you want to speak here?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just speak briefly. I think what Council Jones, he put it the best, I think we should just, this was assessed to be, you know, for fiscal year 2024, so I think we should just stick with this fiscal year. So I will be supporting 1,482,000. Council Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hanover, just to clarify, is this the culvert right at the bottom of Binloss on River?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a little pond on the west side and it just drains directly--
Very badly. All right, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, a call for a vote on CIP 2A in the amount of 200, uh, Council Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Casiri?
I'm sorry, can we just clarify, is this the one adding the 200,000? Okay, yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Jones?
No.
Council McBride?
No.
Council Parker?
No.
Council Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a no. So that is four in favor, four opposed, zero abstaining, that fails. Onto CIP 2A in the amount of 1,482,000. Council Baumgartner?
Yes.
Council Casiri?
Yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council McBride?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. I'll make a motion for CIP 2B in the amount of 45,000.
Casiri, second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Casiri. Seeing no discussion, oh, Council McBride?
And I apologize for arriving late. So it appears to me that everything has been approved so far, is that safe to assume?
No.
No?
The 1F--
Is zero.
Was zero.
Zero, okay. And that was zero in the proposed Capital Reserve, okay. So I guess my question was, my original thought, I was hoping to bring it forward earlier, was we need to reduce some funds, some, some costs somewhere, and my belief is that we should consider consulting, things that are being used for consulting dollars, to push them off until a future next year, or to at least reduce them in half to save some money. So I just wanted to make that statement, that I would be supporting reducing anything that is a feasibility study or a consultant study of some form, to try to bring this down from 8.1 to, you know, a few million dollars. So I guess I don't really have a proposed motion or anything on the table of figure, but I think that's one area we should be considering reviewing reductions, is to reduce some of the consulting studies that are in this CIP, because to simply take from ARPA to fund, I agree with taking from ARPA some of the funds, but I don't think the purpose of ARPA was just to have money utilized to fund all these capital improvement projects. I think there were other more longer-term effects and impacts to utilize of the ARPA fund, so I would be a proponent of moving some of these consultant studies to next year as opposed to this year's budget, so I'll just leave it as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Baumgartner?
Yes, a question for the town manager, perhaps, well, could you share some legislative history on this CIP? Well, take that back, not that the CIP has a whole, but specifically the FYE 23 request. It's my understanding that we have deliberated on this, on this item in the past. I believe we eliminated this study because we were applying for a state, a grant at the state level. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in acquiring, in receiving that grant, and now we are voting on this tonight. Is this the correct CIP or is there another? It was a study for resiliency of Mystic.
And we have, how does this play into the resiliency studies that planning received?
Yeah, the resiliency study, planning department just received, was just for downtown Mystic. It doesn't include West Mystic, which is this area we're talking about, and this is a very low-lying, flat area, and, I mean, the town manager and I have been in numerous meetings with residents there regarding the drainage issues, you know, just, there's nowhere for the water to go, so--
Oh, this includes Willow Point area?
It's a--
This is where it includes, oh, yeah, this is, this is one of the highest on the list, we need to do, nonstop from people. Yeah, I didn't realize that was part of this.
This was, this was a CIP, I think, a couple of years ago, you're right, I think it was zeroed out.
Essentially, they've been, we have regular meetings with the Willow Point, I didn't realize that was this one, and we've promised we do everything we can to forward the study.
So I believe we have that CIP, yes, we do have that, no, we do not have that CIP included for this fiscal year, so is that, will that study, eventual study, impact whatever is done in terms of this, the work that will be done by this CIP? And that's, it's just a simple question.
I don't believe so. I mean, whatever we can do now to alleviate the problems that they're having now, that's what they're trying to do here, not look at, you know, the 20, 30-year horizon, which a resiliency study tends to do.
So you've already, yeah, so you're, I guess the short way of answering asking that is, you've already, you already have the solutions.
This is currently our worst area of flooding in the town.
Okay. Okay, I will be supporting this request as it is something that we have deliberated on in the past. Just of note, we'll be facing an estimated 20-inch sea level rise by 2050, uncertainly West Mystic will be taking the brunt end of that for the years to come, more so than the majority of other community neighborhoods in the town ground. As far as how the, those, how we, what dollars we spend, you know, I could go either way, supporting ARPA or the Capital Reserve Fund, so I will make a motion to fund it through ARPA. Should it get voted down, I will support it through the Capital Reserve Fund to the tune of 45,000.
I hear no second.
Second, Westerville.
Okay, so we have a motion for CIP 2B in the amount of 45,000 ARPA funds. That's moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. I think, given some of the concerns we've heard from, from Council McBride and the need to reduce spending, and quite frankly, from the majority of the council to reduce spending in this budget book specifically by reducing our appropriations to capital improvement projects for this fiscal year, I think it would behoove ground to do this. This is, again, as Councilor Parker stated, this is an infrastructure project, this is rooted in, you know, tackling resiliency and sustainability issues, and as the town manager mentioned, this is a, an immediate project that we must take action now, if not, the costs will continue to skyrocket in terms of dealing with the consequences of flooding to properties and our infrastructure. Thank you.
Council Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hanover, can you just go over what roads this is going to be studying?
It's Willow Point, so if you go off, is it Neink Road Route 215 where Mystic Market is, you go over the railroad tracks there, as soon as you go over the tracks there, it's all those roads there, School Street, Casino Road, Essex Street, Apple Tree Lane, probably we've been out a couple, but that's, that whole area where the Mystic Shipyard is.
Okay, thank you.
Council Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I was looking more towards the construction, not the planning part, of looking into how to do this study, because this, I believe this is a study, so ARPA funds can be used for, okay. I'm okay with the coming out of the construction account as, as a planning and engineering thing, item. Um, I figured ARPA funds could be used somewhere else on major projects and to help with, again, other parks and recreations information because the original infrastructure was about outdoors and some other items. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Hanover, how does this relate also down to the flooding that's in the Jupiter Point area? Are these, is it part of the same sort of continual system?
No, Jupiter Point's over in the city.
City.
Right. So that would be.
So this is all by the train tracks, by the shipyard and?
Yeah.
All that? That area. All right. I think I'll support this on the original Capital Reserve Fund is where I'll put this, where it was originally intended to. I think it's, it's fine to put it there. So, thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Yeah, just to comment again on the consultants, I, I count six or seven consultant plans in this CIP, in this capital project plan. And consultants studies are great, but we all need to bear in mind that with the consultant study comes back a number of, for each one of these, another million, another 2 million, another 3 million of, that we're going to incur the next few years. So I just want you to keep in mind, you know, we all know that, but just remember that these consultant studies are just going to lead to future costs as well with future projects. And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily be supporting this one because there are six or seven of them on. I'd probably go and not support any of them for consistency. However, because Town Manager Burt said this was the number one, the largest issue we face in town, I will be supporting it and I'll be supporting it under the Capital Reserve Fund, not ARPA funds. So, thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Can you tell me, um, historically, how much have we usually spent in CIPs annually?
I think before, before, uh.
COVID.
COVID. Probably about what we are spending this year. In the three range, of course, that was before roads were put in, um, you know, so.
Around 3 million, you're saying?
Somewhere in that ballpark. That was pre-roads because, because since I've been here, we've been using the bond dollars.
Right. And, um, what I saw in the book, um, it states that, let me, section B, I guess it's page four, it's capital improvement projects from FYE 23 to 28. And the Capital Reserve Fund basically would be at about $33 million. And, and of course, over time, there will be more added to that list and things taken off. But over five years, if you divide that out, that's about 6.6 million. So in my perspective is if we push, keep pushing things down the road, which has been done for many years in our community, we're just going to get a big pileup of things that are necessities. And then we're going to be really in a bind of what we're going to be able to, um, fund in the future years. So I would like to say that over the past, can I just say maybe, um, Director Landry? How much, um, averaging, how, how much have we increased the mill rate over the past four years?
I'm sorry, but I don't have that exact information over the past four years. And I don't have my laptop to look at that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. But overall, in the past four years, have we had substantial increases?
No.
Very moderate?
No.
Very small? What would you consider them?
I would say moderate. I would think that for the most part, um, the increases related recently have been for the school project.
And that's my point. We've, we're bonding 189 million dollars basically for schools and our community has not really felt that impact over the, I mean, we've been bonding for, I think, about four years, five years now, and our community has not really felt the impact. And now we're at a stage where we have things to do and, and I get it's happening on a revalue year, but we can't, I don't think we can push some of these things off. And, and sadly, the, the taxes will go up a little bit. They're going to go up. They voted to, to fund these schools and the payment's going to come due here. And we've done very well, I think, in the last four years at keeping taxes down. But I, I don't think pushing things off for the future, which when we, when I showed up four years ago, that had been done a lot. And we were stuck with a lot of things that we had to do and there were no other options. And, um, so I would like to sort of stay on, on a track that we are funding these things the best we can. There may be some things coming up on the list that I may want to push off for specific reasons. But, um, this one right here, I think, I'd like to stick to the Capital Reserve as it's been highlighted here and pretty much divvied out equally of what can come out of Capital Reserve. And maybe make some other motions on some of the future things. But thank you.
Mayor? Manager Burt? Counselor Baumgartner?
There doesn't appear to be an appetite to fund through ARPA. So I'd like to rescind the motion so we can proceed with business this evening.
Counselor Westerville, you're the second.
Yes.
Okay. So we just have the main motion of 45,000 from Capital Reserve.
Just, and I've said this many times in the past, we're at the point where, obviously, I totally agree with Counselor Franco, there's specific reasons why you might want to push things off, lack of information, whatever else. We're at the point though now where we need to be told if you're going to start pushing much off, just, we need to know what to actually cut out permanently. We can't push off any longer. It's, if you're going to do it, you gotta do it.
Counselor McBride?
This is just a general question because I feel like people think I'm trying to push things off and don't want to do any work. And I guess my question is, Town Manager Burt or Director Landry, my, my overriding question or comment is, I believe we shouldn't saddle the taxpayers, and I think I may have emailed you this, with 8 million dollars, whatever it is, in one year. Because in my, in my world, you match, uh, the matching principle is you match revenues in with expenses out, meaning if you're going to pay for something that's going to last 20 years, you should finance it for 20 years. You should enjoy the benefit of that for 20 years instead of saddling a taxpayer in one year for something that they're going to get the benefit of for 20 years. So with that being said, it leads me to the discussion on the, on the debt reserve, the bonds outstanding, which I know we're at our, near our max and stuff. So I guess, I know you can't project out perfectly, but do you foresee in the, in the next couple of years, the ability to do bonding for some of these projects instead of to continue to hit the taxpayer annually? Or, you know, do you see it going down in two years or three years? Or when does that, when, when could the crystal ball be that you think we can bond for some of these projects like we used to?
The, the problem we've run into as we've analyzed things is like with the roads, you know, so we've spent that money and we paid along the way as much as we would have, plus you're paying interest. Now we're going to pay for it forever while we're now funding the roads. You're going to pay a certain amount every year. It's just more paperwork to spread it out over other years. You know, really just kind of figure out what are the things you want to do. And just, I, I, I just don't subscribe to the philosophy of breaking it apart like that. It makes it overly complicated for more needs to be. I don't see bonding for these simple things because you're going to have to, you're just going to pay more in the long run. You're going to pay interest and closing costs, et cetera. It doesn't save you anything. So to me, it's just costing the taxpayers more. And I think, Cindy, we've had many discussions on this, analyzing all these things. We've done, back when the roads were, came off, we did a bunch of analysis for the council on whether to bond again. And the decision was it was not worth it.
Okay, I respect that philosophy. I guess my question is, do we have available bonding ability in two years from now? The council desire. I know right now we're at the, I think you mentioned this nine and a half percent cap. We're, we're right there where I would think it would go down. Is that not the case?
Well, sure. I do have, we have the bond that's come up for this school, but you do, you know, your bonds, you pay them down every year. But I'm not quite sure when you mean when there are funds available. I mean, here.
When there's more room in the cap.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a philosophical discussion whether.
Right. What we try to, what we try to do too is leave some room for large projects sort of tied up a little bunch of small stuff. Like if we did the athletic fields, that's probably going to be a, a bond for there because that's a large project. And that, you know, we're likely to do something, you know, turn down schools, redoing these properties and all that. That's probably be one large project not spread out. And so that's probably going to take up some bond room too.
Okay. So it sounds like there is available bonding potential.
Sounds right.
Your recommendation is not to do that, not to utilize this type of capital for those bonding for. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 2B in the amount of $45,000. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Make a motion for CIP 2C in the amount, wait, this is a zero?
No. 2B, page 219.
Is that the one?
2C. No, no, we're on 219. 3B, we're on 3B.
3B.
3B. On 2, page 219.
Oh, great. That, uh, 2C was put in there by mistake. Remember, I think that's part of what Director Landry had sent out to the council a little while ago? Maybe a week ago or so?
Thank you. So I'll make a motion for CIP 3B in the amount of $75,000.
Second, Parker?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Counselor Franco?
Can you tell me where you would be doing sidewalks with this funding?
Uh, this is primarily along Route 1. Uh, this is not new sidewalks. This is to replace, uh, broken panels. Or we hire a contractor. If they have lifted panels, they create a trip hazard. They'll come in and saw cut to alleviate that trip hazard, which will have a contractor in the spring to do that. So this is really, um, to repair the existing sidewalk network.
This is just one of the base things we got to keep up with. Whereas the next one's more something we'd like to do.
So this is routine maintenance? And if it's along Route 1, from what we've been told, the state does not cover sidewalks?
Correct. Town handles all those sidewalks.
All right. And it'll, this says it'll cover over 150 distressed areas. Okay. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote on CIP 3B in the amount of $75,000. Counselor Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Aye.
Melendez is a yes. That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. I make a motion for CIP 3C in the amount of $200,000. It's from Capital Reserve Fund.
Second, Baumgartner.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner.
And before there's any amendment or anything, you know, that was on that tentative list of, uh, ARPA funds. This is, you know, something that's not, you know, the core, it's not critical. It's something we'd like to do. It, you know, creates more walkability. I just want to flag it's something that could be put off. Unless Craig gives a reason.
I know the Planning Commission wants to have these sidewalks.
Yeah, the Planning Commission would like to see these, yeah.
Counselor Franco?
So it says in the, I mean, there's a list of numerous areas here. Server 23 and program for the 24, 28 are funds to construct sidewalks in these high priority areas. Um, where do you think you would be focusing on?
We had 200,000 approved last year. We're focusing on Route 1, um, on the north side, like along from Town Hall, um, that area. And also up by, um, Route 1 to Route 12 by where, is it Restaurant 99 is up in that area, Bridge Street. Um, then we're also going to be looking at, I think the next area we'll be looking at is Groton Long Point Road from Brook Street down to Esker Point Beach. Um, there's a gravel shoulder there that people obviously walk on all the time. Then there's no sidewalks there. So that would be the next area. Um, and then potentially Allen Street, um, to connect the, the neighborhood. It's on Allen Street with downtown Mystic because those people have to walk on the street there for a short distance.
And all of that with this funding for?
No, this, I'm just saying, you know, we'll do as much as we can for the 200,000 per year, per year.
That's just the order of the next few projects.
The few projects over the next couple of years.
All right. I will, um, make a motion to cover the 200,000 with ARPA funding.
Casiri, second.
Motion for CIP 3C, 200,000 ARPA dollars. Moved by Franco, seconded by Casiri. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I, I think I could support this motion largely due to the fact that it is an infrastructure project, quite frankly, shovel-ready. My only question and slight concern is, um, you know, we will be appropriating 200,000 from the ARPA fund for infill sidewalks. Most of the projects exceed that amount. So I would imagine that with the exception of one, the Quanah Plains Park frontage, which will cost 125,000, an estimated 125,000 dollars. We are also deliberating on several CIPs that, um, include investments in that general area. So I would just note, we, that have been also highlighted by the town manager as, um, as potential projects that could be funded by ARPA in lieu of Capital Reserve Funds. Um, so just bear that in mind when we're, um, kind of looking to invest in the, of all of Groton. Um, but should we appropriate 200,000 for this fiscal year through ARPA? Is it likely that a project like that would be funded just by virtue of the fact that it is the only?
Look at doing like the high priorities on Route 1 and do as much as we can. You know, I, there are certain sections of Route 1, their sidewalks are missing. So we go and fill it as much as we can for the 200,000.
So, okay, so just because something is listed as 400,000, that, that? It can be broken up. Yeah, we, we, we would break it up into two, two years, say. Okay, that, that, that answer certainly helps. And I'll, I'll be supporting the proposed motion. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Although I appreciate Town Manager Burt's, you know, putting this together, this analysis to kind of split and try to save some funding, I still have concerns of utilizing, you know, half or 4 million of the 8 million ARPA funds. I think the ARPA fund's intended purpose, although some of it was for infrastructure, I think it was to spread it further in the community and do some other things. So, um, that was my reason for the ARPA comment. And I, I think I would prefer to make reductions in some of these areas. And I think this is one of the items where I would not be in support of. I did hear Town Manager state that this wasn't as critical as some of the other ones. So I think at some point, I would be more in favor of making reductions to, to all of these amounts and postponing them versus just utilizing all of the ARPA funds to continue these forward. So I won't be supporting this. And I think we need to start considering reductions to some of these capital items. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if we do a, a reduction on this sidewalk project, does it kill the entire project or just this year?
It would just be this year.
It would just be this year. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote on CIP 3C in the amount of 200,000 ARPA funds. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
No.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
No.
Uh, Melendez is a yes. That carries six in. Melendez is a yes that carries six in favor, two opposed, McBride and Westerville, zero abstaining. I make a motion for CIP 4A in the amount of 1,180,000.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Franco.
Yeah. I'll be right here if Mark needs me.
Counselor Franco?
Thanks, Greg.
I'd like, I'll wait a moment.
Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to move 980,000 out of capital improvement over to ARPA funding, and the other 200,000 would stay in LoSiP.
Second, Parker.
Okay, so I have a motion for CIP 4A in the amount of 1,180,000, 980,000 of which would be ARPA funds, 200,000 would be LoSiP. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, this is a revitalization project of Sutton Park where we had a lot of members from the skate park show up and talk to us about how much this park means to them. And I will tell you, I have used this park when I was a child, and I think it's in great need of revitalization. I think the lighting by the skate park was originally installed, and there was a pond there, and it was just like basically one light, and it was to show a pond and to show the beauty of a pond in the evening. And I have driven through here, and I've had conversations about this park, and I am in full support of revitalizing this, and I think our community has stated over and over again from conversations I've had that they are looking to have good parks in our community. So I will be in full support of this. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I propose that we fund 400,000 from LoSiP and 780,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund for a grand total of 1,180,000 for 4A.
Point of information?
That will remove it from the police one.
I'm sorry?
That 200 would come out of the 6K of the police. That's where the other 200,000 is scheduled for.
Point of information?
Well, first of all, do we have a second? I'm sorry. We're not here in a second.
I'll second that. I thought I heard it, I'm sorry.
I didn't finish your point of...
So moved by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. So would you like to speak to your...
Yes, and also I would just note, removing that funding source from, as the manager mentioned, the 200,000, I believe, was appropriated for the police locker room. It is no, has no bearing on my support for the locker room in terms of ARPA funds or Capital Reserve Funds. I would note that the motion, earlier motion to fund approximately 980,000 from ARPA would consume a significant portion of ARPA funds. It's about 8.6 million that we will be receiving, and we, given the fact that we have not considered other projects, I would, and I mean this with great respect, that we just are mindful of how we, if we do intend to use ARPA for other projects or other CIPs, that this item in and of itself will represent a huge commitment. And so if we can break up some of those investments, you know, for CIPs, I think that would be advantageous to us. The 400,000 will be coming from LoSiP under this proposal, which would mean there would be 780,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund, a net reduction of 200,000 of, would open up 200,000 of appropriated funds for, you know, to the, from the Capital Reserve Fund. It would allow us to invest in other areas or reduce spending, which I think has been a common theme this evening. So I would hope the council bears that in mind, that we really ought to break up kind of some of these ARPA investments as opposed to putting them into very large items, nearly in this case, 1 million. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
Can you re-explain what this motion is? I don't understand what he did.
Okay, so...
What Counselor Baumgartner did, sorry.
So 400,000 would, so 780,000 would be Capital Reserve, and 400,000 would be LoSiP. Now, there was already 200,000 in LoSiP. The manager can speak where the other 200,000 would come from.
That would come from 6K right now, or 6, excuse me, the police, the men's locker room. Right now, we have 60,000 Capital Reserve, 200 LoSiP, so it would remove the 200 LoSiP funding and place it over into the 4A.
Right, and I would just add that you could remove that 200,000 from there, and then we could fund that with a different funding source.
I have information. Wasn't it 780 out of ARPA, not Capital Reserve? Or did you say Capital Reserve?
I said Capital Reserve.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah. No, I was saying, I don't believe we should...
Did you reduce it? I'd just like to clarify, I have 780 from ARPA.
I did 400,000 from, 400,000 from LoSiP, 780,000 from the Capital Reserve Funds.
Okay. And then the motion before that, just to be clear, was 980,000 from ARPA, 200,000 from LoSiP, and the one before that was 980,000 from Capital Reserve, 200,000 from LoSiP. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I am not willing to compromise morale with the police department by taking LoSiP funds away from their locker room project. I think this project is exactly what ARPA was intended for. This is the replacement of the bowl for the skate park. This addresses safety concerns, it removes portions of the fence, installs proper lighting to expand available skate park, increases ADA accessibility, re-roofs the pavilion, and widens the walking path and installs solar lights. And we had an overwhelming amount of people come here and speak to us about how much the skate park meant to them and how, you know, their recreational activity was a lifestyle and a part of our community, and I 100% support using ARPA funds for this. I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. One, I think I agree with Counselor Casiri, this is an excellent use of ARPA funds, it's supporting a lot of different kinds of people and a lot of different activities in a park that gets a lot of use. Mr. Barry, can you just, I know we have the restroom project is going on. Are you going to be able to sort of integrate the state-funded restroom project with this project?
Yes, all of the work is, all of the engineering is going to be done internally by Public Works, so I know their engineers are, will be working together to make sure that, you know, the grant money that we got for the bike path that's going to go through Sutton Park, they're working with, she's working with the engineer that's doing the designing of the bathroom, and, you know, replacing, fixing one of the pavilions, that's kind of staying where it is. The footprint of the skate park is not expanding, so there really wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be any conflicts there or issues that we'd have to worry about. The one thing that is included in this is the 175 for redesigning and repaving the parking lot, so that would play into the layout of where the bike path is going to be. But like I said, this is all being done internally, so they're working as a team on this.
I know in the, in previous years, we've talked about the water that drains through Sutton Park and ends up in Quantic Plains Park. Will this help at all with sort of directing some of that water somewhere else, or is it still going to kind of flow through?
Yeah, I don't believe that this is, the reason that that, my understanding of the reason that that happens is just the high water table and the fact that they're...
It's the water coming up as opposed to flowing through.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't, Mr. Hanover could speak to this, but I do not believe that any of this work is going to change the fact that water actually kind of flows towards Quantic Plains versus away.
And I actually really like that you put in here the walking path and solar lights, that's, Counselor Borlan has supported that, and that was, we walked there many times in the past in the dark, and it's a safety, definitely it's a safety issue on the backside of that park. There is, there's no lighting back there, and that's where the children's playground is, so this would hopefully really help with the project.
Right, the plan would be to include parking, lighting in the parking lot.
Okay.
And I do want to make it clear that we're not talking about athletic field lights.
Right, it's on the perimeter.
Yeah, it's just on the perimeter, and it's, and they're low level, they're not the lights that you see like on walkways, you know, they're 12 feet high, they shine right down, so I'm sure that the neighbors are going to have some concerns, and I just kind of want to get out in front of that to say, we're not looking at, you know, baseball or football field lights that are going to...
Yeah, no, I'm very aware of that lighting, and I used to carry, you start walking to the fall, you carry a flashlight with you because it's, it's, it isn't lit. So, great, thank you very much, I look forward to this, and all the concerns when all the skateboard people came out, we're going to be able to solve all their problems, the connections of concrete to blacktop and all of that that they talked about.
Yeah, this project includes removing the remaining pavement and replacing it with concrete, redoing the bowl, which was designed improperly to begin with, and skaters haven't really been able to use it just because of the shape of the bowl.
Terrific. I'll be supporting this project under the original motion put forward by Counselor Franco. I think that's the proper place to put it, and I'm not in favor of touching anything on the, on the police department, so, thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
I do want to agree with some of the councils that said this isn't ARPA-related appropriate expense, and I agree it is, so I'm in favor of this project. However, I have concerns, again, back to we're not making reductions, so I don't think I can make, put anything else on the table, I think you already have three on the table, but I would be supportive of cutting this in half. I mean, we as counselors need to review these budgets and make changes as necessary, and I don't think we can continually fund all these projects at what the ask is. So I would be in favor of reducing that to 440 ARPA and 200 LoSiP, but I don't think I can put that on the floor, but I just want to mention that I think that would be an appropriate change and appropriate use of funds. Thank you.
Yes, after we vote on the first one, you can make another motion.
Good, thanks.
If it, if it fails. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I would note that under the manager's recommendations, we will have, should we proceed to approve all of the Parks and Recreation CIP requests, we would be committing this evening 1,000, 1,555,000 exclusively to Parks and Rec, from ARPA. That is wonderful, we absolutely should be investing dollars into Parks and Recreation. With that said, part of my rationale for utilizing LoSiP for, or the additional 200,000 for LoSiP was because the, kind of the police department proposed CIPs. It was the only department that did not have any projects funded through ARPA, and I do believe that every department should be getting an appropriation from ARPA, and that police locker room is absolutely needed. It is not an engender item right now, but I believe that would be an appropriate use for those funds, that way every department is the beneficiary of those funds as well. And so simply reallocating those funds from, from LoSiP, that proposed LoSiP stream to this would enable greater investment into the park while also reducing the amount that we would be appropriating from the Capital Reserve Fund. And I would respect that the council supports this motion. I do support the full investment, however, I would caution the council for utilizing approximately nearly 1 million exclusively from, from ARPA funds, given the, the great need to invest in other areas, as I had mentioned earlier. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 4A in the amount of 1,180,000, 780,000 of which from Capital Reserve, and 400,000 from LoSiP. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor McBride?
No.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a no, that fails one in favor. Baumgartner, seven opposed, zero abstaining. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to fund this project at a halfway point to reduce 440,000 of ARPA funds and inclusive of 200,000 of LoSiP funding.
Second for discussion.
Okay, so what's your total number?
640. My rationale is I believe we need to make reductions throughout the budget process, including capital funds, we have not made, in my opinion, sufficient funding to reduce the mill rate, so my proposal is to reduce this in half while still utilizing the LoSiP funding that's available to the town, still achieving a lot of what can be done with the half a million dollars of ARPA funds for the appropriate use, and I think it's a wise decision. Thank you.
Okay, and to be clear, that's 440 from ARPA?
Yes.
And 200 from LoSiP?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Barry, what would get cut with this budget?
Let's see. I guess I'll go by priorities. We'd probably invest most of that money into the skate park, hope that there was enough money for lights, and everything else I would see us not doing.
I think with the overwhelming support that we had from the skate park community, from the community that lives near Sutton Park, from all of Groton really, that we should be supporting this full number. I think this was a really good project to be funding fully with ARPA money. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
So I'd just like to clarify, our CIPs basically totaled up to 8 million, and if we, and that was included in our budget and with the mill rate that was proposed, if we're taking half of that, 4 million, and we're putting it to ARPA, we are reducing the budget by 4 million, which has an impact on the mill rate. So I think by reducing and putting money towards ARPA, the mill, we are reducing the budget. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 4A in the amount of 640,000, 440,000 from ARPA, 200,000 from LoSiP. Counselor Baumgartner?
No.
Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a no, that fails one in favor. McBride, seven opposed, zero abstentions.
I'd like to make a motion to utilize 200,000 from the, I'm sorry, 200,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund. I'm sorry. Nine... 45... So 490 million from ARPA. Mark's going to say no take back.
I'll second that.
480,000 from ARPA and, I'm sorry, 490,000 from ARPA and 490,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund. And that should equal 980...
I have 200, you said in Capital Reserve, you said Capital Reserve twice. Do you mean LOSIP for the 200?
490 from ARPA, 490 from ARPA, 490 from Capital Reserve, 490 from ARPA.
If you want the full one, 180, it has to be 590, 590 each.
Oh, no, with 200 still from Capital Reserve.
From Capital Reserve?
Yes.
LOSIP?
LOSIP. Geez, yes. I am sorry, everyone.
Okay, four, okay.
Can we just repeat this, please?
Yes. So I have a motion for 1 million, $180,000, 490,000 from ARPA?
Yes.
490,000 from Capital Reserve Fund. And that should equal 980...
I have 200, you said in Capital Reserve, you said Capital Reserve twice. Do you mean LOSIP for the 200?
490 from ARPA, 490 from ARPA, 490 from Capital Reserve, 490 from ARPA.
If you want the full one, 180, it has to be 590, 590 each.
Oh, no, with 200 still from Capital Reserve.
Okay.
From Capital Reserve?
Yes.
LOSIP?
LOSIP. Geez, yes. I am sorry, everyone.
Okay. Four, okay.
Can we just repeat this, please?
Yes. So I have a motion for 1 million, $180,000, 490,000 from ARPA?
Yes.
490,000 from Capital Reserve Fund and 200,000 from LOSIP.
Yes.
Second, Westerville.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, this breaks up, I think, some of the concern or breaks up some of the spending that would be allocated from ARPA to this project. And still reduce the cost of, that the Capital Reserve Fund would bear for this project. So I think this is a fair compromise. That way, we still have some funds available to fund both ARPA projects and Capital Reserve Fund projects. And we still utilize the existing 200,000 that the manager proposed to fund this project. And as Councilor Casiri mentioned, I really do believe this is a critical project that we have considered for some time, that we have considered in the past to fund utilizing LOSIP in previous councils. And it's long overdue. We heard the outcries and the outpouring of support from folks who have spent their weekends, their late evenings over at Sutton Park skateboarding. So let's invest in this park and utilize three funding streams in a more balanced manner. Thank you.
See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote for CIP 4A in the amount of $1,180,000, 490,000 from Capital Reserve, 490,000 from ARPA, and 200,000 from LOSIP. Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councilor Casiri?
No.
Councilor Franco?
No.
Councilor Jones?
No.
Councilor McBride?
No.
Councilor Parker?
No.
Councilor Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a no. That fails two in favor. Westerville, Baumgartner, six opposed, zero abstaining. So we are back to $1,180,980,000 from ARPA and 200,000 from LOSIP. I'll call for a vote on CIP 4A. Councilor Baumgartner?
I'd like to pass for now.
Councilor Casiri?
Yes.
Councilor Franco?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor McBride?
No.
Councilor Parker?
Yes.
Councilor Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a yes.
And I'm a yes.
Baumgartner's a yes. That carries six in favor, two opposed. McBride, Westerville, zero abstaining.
May I ask for recess?
Yes, we'll do a 10-minute recess, be back at 8:45.
Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Second, Baumgartner.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Councilman Jones?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can you talk about your community connectivity master plan?
Sure. The last time we did a bike and pedestrian master plan was in 2004. Quite a bit has changed in Groton since then. So we're looking to update that. And one of the things that we, when we did a recreational needs assessment in 2020, community connectivity was the second highest rated need in the community after a pool. And so we feel that it's time to update this. It's going to help us better prepare, you know, strategically for changes that have already taken place and changes that will, will take place in the future. This plan includes developing a master plan, a complete street plan, and doing a considerable amount of public outreach. So there's kind of three components to this. And Director Hanover was talking earlier about, you know, infilling. And he's working off of information from 2004. Priorities since then could have changed, and so this would be a great asset to public works as they move forward with a more updated strategic plan.
Is this the kind of plan that could be moved out to next year? Is it imperative that it's done this year? Could we do it? Put a year on it?
My experience in the nine years that I've been here is things keep getting pushed out and keep getting pushed out. Is it absolutely essential? Is it life-saving? No. But it speaks to, you know, we keep talking about making Groton a better place to live, work, and play. And I think this directly impacts making Groton a place that people want to live, work, and play.
And is this a, it's a town-wide plan?
It is, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion for two hundred and ten thousand dollars of ARPA funds.
You already made the motion.
Second. For discussion.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Just changing the funding.
You already, you already put a motion on the floor.
Yep. This is a different.
I understand, but you put the motion on the floor.
He still can put another.
You can't put another motion on the floor if you made the motion.
That's not true.
So the, and I don't mean to speak out of turn. But the mayor put a motion on the floor, and then he, he put another motion on the floor. It's my understanding you can only put one motion. And I second.
Right. We, we had this issue in the first meeting, and it was stated that it didn't matter whose motion was what. You could have multiple motions.
It's only about the number of motions. Somebody can make more than one.
Okay. All right.
But I, I do know what you're speaking of. I think this is a budget, budget thing.
Okay.
Okay, discussion. Counselor Casiri?
I'd like to move another number. Zero. Second.
I have a motion for 4B. Zero dollars, moved by Casiri, seconded by Parker. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I support, you know, updating our complete streets. I support, you know, recreational opportunities, but we just allocated nearly a million dollars in ARPA funds towards parks and rec. And I just think that this is an area that can wait. Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I stand in strong opposition to reducing this line item to zero. That is, this is some, a CIP that has been included in previous CIP requests. And as the director has mentioned, an easy item to can kick because of budgetary pressures. You know, it's interesting. The director had mentioned this is, is it life-saving? No, I would argue, yes, it is. Groton in the last few years has seen an uptick in pedestrian deaths. It is, as take motor vehicle accidents. A motor vehicle hitting a pedestrian has happened throughout our community. And it is something that can be prevented by safer streets and streets that are oriented towards protecting pedestrians and cyclists. That is a proven fact backed by the science. And this master plan would also be very timely in large part because we are planning to invest a significant amount of dollars in parks in, in various neighborhoods that would enhance walkability. And so this plan can help guide some of the development decisions in all throughout our community. Additionally, as you can see in this plan, we have in future CIPs a significant number of investments in roads, cycling and pedestrian infrastructure. As mentioned, you know, Depot Road, Thomas Road, bike lanes. And those investments cannot happen unless you have a plan in place. The Parks and Recreation Department came before us a couple of weeks ago imploring us to make investments in, along Route One in the Paquana Bridge neighborhood. And, you know, if we are looking to invest in certain parks within that corridor, it's absolutely critical we have this plan in place. Earlier this year, we launched efforts to begin studying the implementation of a complete streets plan and been working with the town manager and the mayor to identify individuals in our community that can participate in those ideation sessions. And certainly these public outreach processes that the, now the Department of Parks and Recreation will be embarking on will only further enhance and augment those processes. Again, one hundred and eighty-five thousand simply for the planning and engineering. And then in this case, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-three, no, I'm sorry, one hundred and eighty-five thousand for the planning and engineering. One hundred and fifty thousand for the planning and engineering, and in this case, thirty-three thousand for the library walkway. Again, a plan that has been included in this previous budget books for, for years. It's long past time we make these investments. You know, I respect Counselor Casiri's desire to reduce spending, hold line on spending. But far too often, Parks and Recreation is on the chopping block when it comes to these CIPs. A lot more than other departments. And it's about time, especially in a year like, like this year, that they get their fair share of investment. Thank you.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So I do recall the Trolley Trail Bike Path has been on here for a while, and much discussion has been about that. There's also the twenty-five thousand dollars for matching funds for recreational trail grants to continue work at Beebee Pond and Coop Family Park. So this twenty-five thousand dollars is, if we spend twenty-five, you're going to receive another twenty-five?
It depends on the grant. The Recreation Trails Grant, I think, is the state pays for eighty percent, and we pay for twenty percent. So the twenty-five, the twenty-five thousand dollars would.
Be the twenty percent.
Would be the twenty percent, which would allow us to do a project that was over a hundred thousand dollars.
I will say, when I campaigned, I'd say two years ago, I knocked doors, and I was astonished by the amount of people who have asked us for bike paths. It was amazing how many people had talked to me about bicycling in the community and how they feel it is, how unsafe it is in our community. I do know it's very difficult, at least from my perspective, because I can't, I'm not an engineer in this department. But for the community that's already established, then trying to install bike lanes now is, it seems like it's going to be quite a task. And I think a master plan on how to do this and connect these things. And this is like, and again, these are things that I'm hearing from people in our community that are, that are actually asking for these things. And I would think that the ARPA funding could cover these, this funds, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't touch our budget. So I would be in favor of the ARPA funding. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgartner?
I just want to state I fully agree with Counsel Franco's eloquent words. Good CIP on the pass. Thank you.
Counsel McBride?
Thank you. I, I support the project and its intent very well, but I would agree with Counselor Casiri that we need to reduce the budgets. And I think at the end of the day, if we desire, this could come back three, four, six months from now, a year from now, and we could move it forward with ARPA funds. But I don't think we need to do it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote on CIP 4B in the amount of zero dollars. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes.
She has a zero.
This is zero dollars.
Oh, my gosh, no.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
No.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel McBride?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a no. That fails. Four in favor. Casiri, Jones, McBride, Parker. Four against. Melendez, Baumgartner, Franco, Westerville, zero abstaining. We're back to two hundred and ten thousand of ARPA funds. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel McBride?
No.
Counsel Parker?
No.
Counsel Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a yes. That carries five in favor. Three opposed. McBride, Parker, Westerville, zero abstaining. I make a motion for CIP 4C in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Franco. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So there's two hundred and thirty thousand to restore the approach on greenside at the bunkers on, at hole four. Rebuild a cart path from four to hole five. Greenside and fairway bunkers on a portion of hole six. Also requested is twenty-five thousand to conduct an operational analysis of the golf course for the purpose of maximizing economic potential and improving operational efficiency. The previous study was conducted in 2004. There's also another thirty thousand to replace chain link fence along the Eastern Point Road. So I'm near the, around the tunnel. So my question is, over by Eastern Point Road, the chain link fence, because I don't know the area very well, is it, is it a requirement to have a fence there?
I guess I'd have to check with planning. It was, because I'm not sure. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Is there a reason that you have to have a fence there?
It might have been for safety reasons, because the course is pretty close to the road. So it could be just to make sure that golfers and carts don't go down into the road and people texting and driving and not paying attention go up onto the course.
Also, is twenty-five thousand dollars for an operational analysis of the golf course for purpose of maximizing economic potential and improving operational efficiency? Is this something that you can't do in-house?
Yeah, this, we would bring in outside consultants that look at golf courses all across the country. And in the description, we had one done in two thousand, two thousand and four. We've had implemented a number of those things. But, you know, the golf industry changes, and I think it's important that we kind of keep up. We've enjoyed, we enjoyed a Tiger bump years ago, and then we saw that the golf industry was shrinking. Our membership was shrinking. Greens, rounds were shrinking. We've enjoyed a great bump since COVID, but I don't know how long that's going to last. And, and I'd like to be proactive rather than reactive and be able to implement changes and be prepared to make changes when the golf industry starts to shift again.
Right. So my, my thought is like, there's a potential here that the fence, we don't even, it's not a, maybe not a requirement. And that the operational analysis, my, I hear what you're saying. But also, I think right now, with the fluctuation due to COVID, to do an analysis while things are so crazy, it wouldn't give you a report that would be accurate in stable conditions. Like, if you were in stable conditions and then you did an analysis, you would say, yeah, these are the things you can improve. But when you're in a very tumultuous, tumultuous time, and things are all over the place, and you're not, it's hard to gauge things, and is it due to COVID and other certain factors? I think because it's not stable, that these, that potentially, that might be something that you should wait until maybe we're stable. And the fence, I'm, I'm not sure. Is, is there bushes along that area, or is it just a fence?
No, I think it's just a chain link fence. I don't think there's any bushes.
I, I think Counsel Parker wants to say something real quick.
I'm sorry, can I, point of information for her. Yes, the chain link fence, because I live down that, near that area. It's along the wall of the road and some houses, so we don't hit, they don't hit the houses. So.
Is it, is it like a netting or a chain link?
I can concur.
It's a chain link. It's, it's needed.
Okay.
It's very much needed. And I have to do, I will have to say, during COVID, some of us live near the golf course. There's a lot of, there were a lot of people out there. They're out there every day. If they could be out there in the snow, they would be out there in the snow. So just to give you heads up.
That's why I'm, I'm concerned about doing an analysis during such a crazy time. That's why I'm concerned about doing an analysis during such a crazy time, coming off of COVID, and how, like you said, you're on the upswing, and just things, you're not in a flat, normal, like, trying to figure out where you're at. It's, in two years from now, they might do an analysis, and it wouldn't be pertinent, because we're going through something different right at this time. I would like to put a number on the floor of 200, wait one second. 260,000 coming from ARPA funding.
Casiri, one second.
Okay, I got a motion for CIP 4C in the amount of 260,000 from ARPA funds, moved by Franco, and seconded by Casiri.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
I think I sort of did.
Okay. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, I have a question regarding the enhancements of the course. I believe it's the bunker, bunkers on, greenside bunkers on hole four. You're going to restore the approach, rebuild cart path from hole four to hole five, and greenside and fairway bunkers on portion of hole six. Out of, so obviously, these are, there are different holes. Do you have an idea which holes are in, like, bad, are in very poor shape that are, like, it's a must, must do at this time?
All of these bunkers have been identified in a study that need enhancements. We, we regularly, every two years, we do a survey, and we ask a series of questions, and bunkers consistently score the lowest. And bunkers poorly, or bunkers that aren't up to date slow down the pace of play. And pace of play is, is an important factor in golf. And what happens with the bunkers is, you know, the ball lands in the bunker, the guys, golfers start hacking at it, the sand ends up building up more and more. So a bunker that starts out at two and a half feet, over the course of 15 or 20 years, suddenly becomes four and a half, five feet. So you're actually standing in a hole, and you can't even see, you can't even see the green. So all of these need to be addressed. If-
Agreed.
Yeah, all of these need to be addressed. And this is, John had asked us, excuse me, the town manager had asked us a couple of years ago. We've been coming to the council on an annual basis and asking for around $50,000. And the town manager said, look, why don't we consolidate this into a five-year plan? We did that a couple of years ago. It hasn't been funded for a couple of years, so we're back asking again to address those. Because these, these are year one of the five-year plan, I would say these are the worst. If you're asking me which are the worst among the worst, I would have to defer to Mr. Morrison, who's the superintendent, and I believe he is-
He is on there.
On there, so.
Before he answers, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Isn't part of the issue, too, is, this is a Donald Ross designed course, who was a famous, of course, golf course designer. As those bunkers have changed, they no longer meet his original designs and intent for how play would be. Haven't I heard that there? That, that it kind of loses its historic nature?
Yeah, because the bunkers themselves are changing. They're not built, they're no, they no longer exist the way they are supposed to.
So there's, all the old holes are the bunkers that have not been redone yet. We've been putting together a master plan that you have in front of you with all the different holes, and they're all equally terrible. So number four is a challenging par three, so people have asked us to try to make that hole better. So that's why we targeted that area of the golf course first. But pretty much every hole that is of original design that wasn't part of the five-year lane swap in 97, except for the bunkers that we have redone already, are all equally in terrible shape.
And thank you, Superintendent Morrison. Do you, do you have a cost estimate for rebuilding the cart path, specifically the cart path?
I do not have that broken out, no.
So say if we were to fund both the greenside bunkers on hole four and the fairway bunkers on, on a portion of hole six, what, what would the cost be as opposed to the 230,000?
I can't, I can't answer that question right now. I don't have a price breakdown of each individual part of the project. But I would, I would say if we had a reduction in funding, we would target the bunkers first before the cart path.
Okay. I would certainly be interested in moving the amount of the bunkers, restoring the bunkers on hole four and six, and then replacing the chain link fence, so a total of 30,000. And then minus the operational analysis of the golf course, I have to align my remarks with Counsel Franco for that. And then I think if we could defer rebuilding the cart path for a year, that way we can just, you know, reduce some of the costs contained in the CIP. But certainly agree that we need to invest in those, both holes four and six, the bunkers, utilizing our funds. So if I, if I can just get a better sense of what that, the cost is, minus the, the cart path, I'd like to move that specific number.
In the past, we were, we were budgeting about $50,000 for the bunkers. So if we, if we looked at the bunkers at four, five, and six, if you multiply the 50 by three, that's 150,000. I'm not saying, saying that the cart path would be 80,000.
To ballpark, though.
But, yeah, to ballpark. I would say 150, unless, you know, Superintendent Morrison has something-
I can't imagine that the cart path would be that much. We do have price breakdowns that were created when the master plan was put together with every individual item for each phase. I just don't have it in front of me.
But it's safe to assume, again, that the, it'd be about 50,000 for those three bunkers?
Well, actually, 50,000 was three years ago. I would probably adjust that. The last time we had work done, I think, was, was three years ago. For the last two years, it's been put off. So accounting for inflation over the last three years, if we probably went with 60,000 per hole.
So there would be three, three bunkers replaced in total?
Yes.
The last project we did on 14 green, we rebuilt four bunkers, and that was 50,000.
Three years ago.
Three years ago.
All right. I'd like to move the number of 210,000 from ARPA.
Second, Westerville? So I have a motion for CIP 4C in the amount of 210,000 utilizing ARPA funding, moved by Baumgartner, and seconded by Westerville.
This motion would fund the replacement of the greenside bunkers on hole four, and the greenside and fairway bunkers on portion of hole six, and fund, and replace the chain link fence along Eastern Point Road, and the fencing around the tunnel.
Counsel Parker?
May I ask, thank you, Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mr. Morrison, Mr. Berry, a question? Regarding the cart path, is, are we rebuilding for safety reasons? Or is this just to do an update to keep it fresh, or? I just want to make sure-
No, it's not for safety reasons. There's no cart path between 4T and 5T right now. So if we are able to do the bunker upgrades, the whole area around the green will be re-sodded. The bunkers will be new. So the idea was to put a path for the carts from 4T to 5T, so the carts don't go up near the green, and end up wearing out all that grass. And that is one area of the course, which is a major concern. And we get a lot of complaints about, because it's all worn out up there. So we want to make sure that when we do all this bunker work, and the grass surrounds of the bunkers, that we have a cart traffic area, the path where we can keep the carts, so all that work that we do doesn't get destroyed.
Thank you.
So essentially, we're trying to protect our investment.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So what I'm seeing here as a plan, and if you look to the future, it's like, different areas of the golf course seem to be, going to be renovated in the future years, and the pricing goes up substantially. So I would rather not push anything off to the future, and, and just have the money in future years be even higher. So I would rather just do it this year. Thank you.
Counsel McBride?
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. I see tonight, three golf-related items for $815,000, this one being the 285. The golf being a special revenue fund, my first question and concern is, is there a way we can, over time, set rates or change operational items to make this be more self-sustaining, and not have to ask for capital requests, if that's possible. But more importantly, I can't support these three initiatives for the same reason I can't support the others. I find it difficult, time saying that we should use 815,000, almost 10% of our ARPA funds, for a golf course, that I would, I don't know the percentage of ground residents that utilize it, but I would imagine it's not substantial. And more importantly, if this was something the community and the residents wanted, we could approve this at a later date, and not this evening. Thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Berry, how many rounds of golf are done every year?
This past year, I think we did 39,000 rounds. So prior to that, I think over the last 10 years, the, the average was between, like, 33 and 35. So the last couple of years, we've seen a significant increase, last year being the highest.
So I know we've already gone through the pricing for the golf course, but to kind of echo that what Counsel McBride said, so I just took $285,000 and divided it by 39,000, 39,000 rounds, and $7 per round. I know we have a competitive golf course, but if you raised your prices by $10 per round, we would have a capital fund every year to pay for all of this.
And you'd probably have a lot less people playing golf at Chantacossat.
There's probably some balance point in there.
Right.
We could build a capital fund.
Yeah, we don't, we don't operate in a vacuum. You know, we have to be mindful of what other courses are charging. Our day fees are right at the top now, and if you added, you know, 10 more dollars to that, I think we would, we would lose players.
I'm just wondering, could you add something, a $5 fee, or something, some part of the, of the ticket price, the round price, that just builds a capital fund that you could use for golf course repairs?
Yeah, you know, a master plan, having a consultant come in to do that work would answer those questions.
I just want to know, we voted on the updated-
No, no, I know that. Yeah, I'm just saying that there are multiple ways to pay for this kind of stuff. So I'm just, it's just more of a question, just saying that we could do something with that.
Just very quickly, I, I think that kind of conversation is the conversation we have when we are talking about the golf fees, and the rules, and if we want to change all those types of things. I think that's the time to discuss it. And maybe in another, you know, like you said, another year or so, maybe things will smooth out, and we should fund the operational analysis, and find out all that information. But if you're comparing yourself to local areas, and you're at the max, I trust that if you weren't, you would come to us and say, hey, we have room to raise this, and you would have brought that to our attention earlier.
Right.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to ask this, but I think I will now. Is 210,000 out of 743, 29% a good estimate for a master plan? In other words-
I don't understand.
$210,000 for a plan, of which, the total cost of the plan and all the improvements is 743, 29% a reasonable amount for a consultant plan?
The consultant fees are only $25,000.
The 150,000 to develop a community connected master plan, 150 plus 35, plus 25 is 210.
That was the last-
Yeah, we're on to the golf course, which is C4.
My bad. See, I wasn't going to ask that. So I didn't.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 4C in the amount of 210,000 utilizing ARPA funds. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
No.
Counsel Franco?
No.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counsel McBride?
No.
Counsel Parker?
No.
Counsel Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a no. So that fails. Two in favor, Baumgartner, Westerville. Six opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, so now we are back to 4C, 260,000 of ARPA funds. Counsel Baumgartner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel McBride?
No.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a no. So that carries five in favor, three opposed, Melendez, McBride, Westerville, zero abstaining. I make a motion for CIP 4D.
I'll second that motion.
In the amount of 175,000, seconded by Counsel Baumgartner. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. And just to be clear, the funding source for this is?
Capital.
Capital Reserve. Counsel Baumgartner?
Aye.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel McBride?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerville?
Aye.
Melendez is a yes, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Make a motion for CIP 4F in the amount of $80,000.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. Counsel Franco?
I'd like to move the 80,000 to the ARPA funding.
Set a second?
Second, Jones.
So I have a motion for 80,000 utilizing ARPA funds, moved by Franco, and seconded by Jones. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So this is developing a master plan for a park system, individual parks, open space areas, recreational facilities, and/or programs in context of its location, natural resources, and visions of the community. And it goes on, and it says more. Does this fall in line, basically, like, with my referral that I had brought forward, asking for neighborhood parks, and parks around our community, and what the needs are of our community, and where those needs are, and where we should focus more on, on what we should be doing- should be doing in areas?
Yes, so this, the recreation master plan would include an existing facilities inventory and conditional assessment. You know, not all the parks are at the same level of upkeep. I mean, Sutton Park would probably score much lower than some other parks. There would also be a level of service analysis, so they would look at the entire community and say, okay, what parts of town do not have the same level of service as other places? You know, there are places in town where there are more parks than there, than other parts of the community where there are a lot less parks, there's a lot less trails, you know, accessibility is not the same. So, this master plan would include that, and it would also make recommendations and kind of develop an action plan for the department, and a budget analysis and a staff analysis. It would be, you know, a comprehensive study. Thankfully, we would be able to use the information from the recreational needs assessment. Normally, a recreational master plan would be more expensive, but because we did the needs assessment tied into the Pratt Building a couple of years ago, we're saving money by not having to do as an extensive public outreach as would be normal for doing a recreation master plan. But to answer your question, yes, it would identify those parts of the community where there is less availability, less accessibility to parks.
Well, I think this is very important, and I have brought the referral forward to do something of similar. And I think this is much needed in our community, and because we do hear from people in different areas of the community that some sections seem to receive more and other sections seems to have less, and it seems like there's a disparity between the two. And I would like to level some of that playing field out with actual data telling us facts of where we need this. So, I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, are you able to put any of the golf course planning in this plan, or is this exclusive of that?
I think I would leave that out. I would rather the focus be on the parks and recreation side and not delve into the golf course. I think when we do that master plan for the golf course, I think it will be much more intense and developed. And I think trying to do a master plan that includes, you know, all the things that I've identified in this plan, plus delve into the golf course, it would just be a superficial...
But the two can work together in some way, just because they're both, you know, huge recreational facility.
Yeah, yeah. But the analysis of the golf course is going to be much different than the analysis of park facilities and staffing and budgeting and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Barry, is this going to address potentially the need for or the location of a town green as well?
Probably not. We're planning on doing a visioning session with the planning department, and that visioning session is going to take place much sooner than this study would take place.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McBride?
I just want to say that I am supportive of this plan because I think the general use is more broad-based for the community, so I think it fits ARPA in my personal opinion, and it's not 430,000 for a sidewalk or 200,000 for a sidewalk or 430,000 for traffic signals or 80,000 for golfers. So, I fully support this in using ARPA.
See no further discussion. I'll call for a vote on CIP 4F, the amount of $80,000 of ARPA funds. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel McBride?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerveld?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
That's it. Thank you for your support this evening.
Okay, we're now on to education. I make a motion for CIP 5A in the amount of 244,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Franco. Counsel Franco?
This is 244,000 for, is this the resurfacing of the football field?
The re-crowning, and also it has the irrigation system to it. This was first proposed about three years ago, and then the town council had a task force to look into the fields and the area at Fitch and other parks. But we really feel that we've actually done a lot of collaboration with Rosso, and we're sharing some fields. We have Mark Romano now as the athletic director on the campus, where we have Fitch High School, Rotten Middle School, and also Rosso Tech, and we're doing some sharing of fields. So, to have a really nice grass field, football field that's safe for our kids to play on is important.
Thank you. I am a huge advocate for fields. Absolutely, I think they're greatly needed in our community. But unfortunately, I also think that we have a sports field task force that is trying to do a whole master plan for our community, and potentially, we might be coming forward with bonding, asking for a referendum from our community to do sports fields around our community, and this might include the football field, which could, I mean, there's decisions to be made whether it should be grass or if it should be turf, and whether it should be multi-use, or if it should just remain for football. And there was also talk of expanding the size of it. And so, I do have concern of actually spending money on this. If we don't actually know in the future what the plan is, and the plan may change, and we might redo the whole, like, we could potentially redo the stadium, you know, including the track field and such around it. Is that a potential in your mind?
Well, I'm kind of waiting for the task force to make that decision. You know, I'm just looking at our students now who are playing on the field and safety for their sake, that, you know, the field does need work, and year after year, we keep using it. But we do need it to be re-crowned, and we do need it to have irrigation if we continue to use it. So, you're right, it's a tough spot that we're in. Certainly, if you've seen Rosso Tech's turf field at the top of the hill, if there's a way that we can partner and utilize all those fields together, I think that would be great for Rotten.
I would agree. I would, although it hurts, I'm going to amend the motion and put zero on the floor.
Cassiri, seconds.
I have a motion for CIP 5A, zero dollars, moved by Franco, seconded by Cassiri. Any discussion? Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, I can't support this motion. As the superintendent stated, this will address some of the safety concerns of the field. I do believe in, actually, Manager Burt, would you be able to state when this item was placed originally in our budget book?
I can't say for certain, no. It's been in there, though, I feel, a few years, three or four years, probably. I'd have to look back, though.
Okay, that is my recollection as well. So, I think it is long overdue. Obviously, there are quite a few other CIPs with respect to education that I think we can discuss the merits of those specific items and their funding sources, but I think for this, I cannot support zero and will be supporting the initial motion on the floor. Thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting Counsel Franco's recommendation. I think if we are that close to coming up with a solution to the field's task force, there's no need to kind of do this project twice and waiting another year or so, whenever that project sort of comes forward, I think would be a prudent way to do it. We do have other fields in that area, so I think it's prudent to wait, just to see where this, what the recommendations come from the task force.
Counsel Westerveld?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'd probably rather go with ensuring the safety of the kids on the fields now rather than wait for the potential of a referendum, which may or may not pass. So, this may or may not happen with the task force, so I would rather do it now, make the kids safe, and then make adjustments as necessary in the future.
Thank you. Counsel Franco?
How many kids have been hurt on the field due to the field itself and not from the violent game of football?
That would have to be a research project to see. You know, we do have kids who do have injuries on fields, our own and others, so for all kinds of reasons. But I just know that if you've been on the field lately, it really, there are some concerns with it, and this was a project that, from my recollection, has been at least three to four years out.
Yes, it's been on my agenda since I started, and, but without any kind of numbers, I mean, you mentioned safety, and I'm not trying to dismiss that, but this is a very violent game of football being played on a field, and I think there are injuries and there's safety concerns just by playing football in itself. And then compared to the ground you're running on, I understand, but I'm talking, like, can you say any kind of numbers with this field specifically that injuries were due to the actual ground and not from the violent game of football?
I can also say that it's not just football. It's, we also use that field for lacrosse, soccer, and physical education classes. So, you know, the field is not in great condition. It does need to have some attention, and, you know, it really depends on what the town wants to do in the future.
So, there's also, you're asking for you to irrigate the field as well as re-crown the field, and I just have a hard time spending the dollars for now, and we could potentially be asking for a very large referendum, and spending it now, redoing it, and then in so many years to possibly come in with a whole new plan and redo it. So, what, is there any repairs that can be made instead of resurfacing the whole field and without having to put in irrigation at this moment?
Well, there probably have to be a study done to figure out if there was a need to do that would be less expensive.
Right.
I don't have the answer to that.
I see Chair Shepherdson-Wasson has her hand up.
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to speak to, and I am sorry, my view doesn't allow me to know who has been talking or who has not. And by the way, hi, friends. My concern is, is that this has been a CIP project that has been in the making for multiple years, and once again, I don't have how long ago this was. I believe that this field is maintained the best as it has been. We're now at the point of a critical point of making sure that this gets re-crowned and irrigated. As Superintendent Austin has stated, this field is not only used for football, but it's also used for multiple other purposes. Yes, there's a long-term plan, and as one of your counselors has stated, we have the long-term plan of what the field committee might be coming in with a hope that the referendum might be passing. But my concern is, is that this is sort of where we play our home game, and the field needs a lot of work. And I would hope that we would want to put some effort to make sure that the fields look good and are safe and are given the best maintenance that they can have. That's just kind of my perspective. And I understand the dilemma that you guys, that you are under in terms of this is going to be put forth in a referendum, but it's going to take a while for that referendum to kind of get solidified. But up until that point, we're still going to be needing, wow, let me try the sentence one more time. We're still going to need to be able to use these fields in the meantime, and I think that this is a necessary item. Thank you.
So, it can't be made, like, any kind of maintenance done to bring it up to safety?
Oh, I would say that we have been trying to maintain it the best we can, but it's kind of gotten to this point where we really need this kind of work, level of work done on it.
Thank you.
Counsel Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent Austin, is this the actual, was this a quote from a contractor that looked at the field?
Yes, the facilities director did go and get an estimate of what this cost would be.
How long ago?
Probably three years.
So, this price might not be the correct price at this time?
Well, I know. That was his best estimate at the time.
My other question is, if it's more, where's the additional money coming from? Will it be coming out of the school budget or DODIA or anything else?
Well, if it's approved, we would certainly try to figure out, you know, how it could be done, and, you know, probably have to go out to bid for it, too.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Just to mention, we've seen similar projects coming in higher lately, so it's definitely likely to come in more than if it was three years old.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, so the number on the floor, the original motion on the floor was 244,000. I would note that we just approved $285,000 request from the golf course, funding through ARPA, 230 of which, about 230 of which was to replace the bunkers and the cart, and that's numbers pretty similar to the 244,000. That is under consideration for, that's under consideration for the football field. It was mentioned tonight that we should, this is news to me that the town or there is consideration for a bond referendum to support sports fields. I certainly support an investment, continued investments in, growing investments in sports fields. Obviously, the big question is how we fund those. You know, we have discussed tonight, really, with Counsel McBride kicking off those discussions as to whether it's appropriate to bond for certain projects in the future, and I would argue that the one, you know, the one type of infrastructure that should be funded by, you know, that is justified to be funded by bonds or roads, and I personally believe that's the bad approach. So, you know, I wouldn't support, quite frankly, relying on bonds that ultimately have to be approved by the voters, and it could be voted down. You know, I support, again, investments, but I think we need to do that within our own budget framework. And so, I don't want to rely on that. That is not something that this council has even deliberated on, so I don't want to base a decision off something we haven't, as a council, talked about yet. And this is, as mentioned, a project that is needed now, will impact safety, so I will support the $244,000 request, and I implore counselors to do the same. Thank you.
Counsel McBride?
I'm in support of the project as well. However, as I've indicated earlier, I don't think this needs to be approved tonight. I think it should go back and be approved through the ARPA process, so I can't be in favor of this at the current time for the same reasons I mentioned earlier.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How many motions on the floor?
There's two motions. The motion we will vote on first is from zero dollars, and second will be 244,000.
I'd like to put another motion on the floor?
Okay. Okay.
Make a motion for 244,000 to come from ARPA funds.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion for 244,000 ARPA dollars for CIP 5A, moved by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner.
No explanations needed.
All right, see no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
No.
Counsel Franco?
No.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counsel McBride?
No.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes, so that fails. Four in favor, Melendez, Baumgartner, Parker, Westerville, four against, Casiri, Franco, Jones, McBride, zero abstaining.
So that failed?
That failed. So we're back to $0. Counsel Baumgartner?
No.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel McBride?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Abstain.
Counsel Westerville?
No.
Melendez is a no. Okay, so this carries. Four in favor.
That fails.
4-3-1. 4-3-1.
There's an abstention.
Yeah, that counts as a no, though.
Oh, you need five?
Yes.
Okay, so this fails, four in favor, three opposed, one abstention. Okay, so we're on to $244,000, no ARPA funds. Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
No.
Counsel Franco?
No.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counsel McBride?
No.
Counsel Parker?
Abstain.
Counsel Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. This fails. Three in favor. Melendez, Baumgartner, Westerville. Four against, Casiri, Franco, Jones, McBride, and one abstention. Parker.
Point of inquiry, if no motion is passed, does that mean it can be up for reconsideration at the next meeting, the continued capital projects?
If you never do anything, it'd be a zero, but it, but otherwise, just take it up later.
It's just reconsidered or there's no, or there's no side?
No.
There's no side to reconsider?
Consider.
Nobody won?
They could entertain more motions now, but I guess if you stop, then, yeah, we're about postponing the continuing.
I'll make a motion to postpone this CIP to the next budget meeting.
Well, okay.
If that's permissible.
Well, it's technically all one meeting, so.
Table this item until?
Or table it.
Okay.
Can you table it?
Table it till it's at the same meeting later.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to table?
Some moves.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion to table CIP 5A. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville.
Just quickly, I would note, I mean, clearly, we've had three very different motions, and that's okay. That's, it's just the nature of the business. But in this case, only a tie-breaking vote in this case would be, Counsel Borlan would be able to decide the fate of the CIP, so I think unless somebody's willing to change their vote in this evening, I think it's better just to move on, because we got a few more to tackle before. I think a lot of us would like to get home. Thank you.
Point of admission, what does table mean?
So we could just set it aside until later in the meeting.
Right.
To postpone or table?
Table.
Table, because you're within the same meeting ongoing. It's, we just recessed.
Right. So how do you bring it back?
You have to do a motion. Motion to put it back on the table? Yeah, motion to put it back on the table. And if you never do anything in the whole budget process, closes out, it's a zero.
Okay.
All right.
So?
Could you go on, you know?
No. So we have a motion to table, CIP 5A. Counsel Baumgartner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
No.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counsel McBride?
No.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Westerville?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. Oh, no, we got it.
Wait a minute.
That's, that's fine.
That's five in favor. That's five in favor. Three opposed, Franco, Jones, McBride, and zero abstaining.
We might as well just pass it tonight, because it's going to get passed now.
Make a motion for CIP 5B in the amount of $1 million.
Casiri, second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Casiri.
Any discussion? Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes. Good evening, Superintendent Austin, and our esteemed Chair of the Board of Education, Watson. Great to see you both. Just a question regarding funding sources. We, as proposed in this budget, we are utilizing about a million dollars, about a million dollars for the roof replacement at Charles Barnum. This evening, we made kind of an 11th hour, I should say maybe yesterday, but 11th hour decision to utilize ARPA funds to defray some of the costs that could be borne by the taxpayers in order to fund a lot of these critical investments. And it is my understanding that the Board of Education has devised a plan as to how they intend to spend, spend their ARPA funds. However, you know, I think given some of the shared sacrifices for, for all kind of parties, my curiosity is, can ARPA funds be utilized to either defray, wholly fund, or, you know, partially fund some of the costs of this roof replacement? And, and specifically, the ARPA fund?
Well, ARPSER for education is very specific, and we really spent about four or five months planning it with community input, and we actually had from the Connecticut Association of School Superintendent, an ARPSER advisor, who was right by our side in planning it. And much of the funds goes directly to educating our students and recovering from COVID-19. Health and safety and security are all part of that. Social, emotional learning is part of that. Academic repair and recovery is part of that, and we've actually put in about $750,000 in HVAC, and I talked to the town manager about partnering with the HVAC systems. We've already made a purchase for Fitch High School that will be implemented in the summertime, so we still have some funds through that portion of our ARPSER to take care of HVAC needs. I've just recently gotten notification that federal government is doing more granting around HVAC, so I would be looking into that as well. But as far as a roof repair, no, ARPSER funds, the educational federal granting would not be part of it.
And is it that it doesn't qualify, or that it's just simply the plan, you know, the plan?
No. And actually, this is a leaking roof, so I do have some concerns about what happens when you get moisture in a building. And I don't know if you know our vintage, this is one of our last vintage schools built in the 16, which really hosts much of our military population. So, you know, it, it really is a school that's built partially underground. It's kind of like a split level, and so there is a lot of moisture, and the roof situation, you know, I've gone into the school where there's buckets, much like SC Butler. So we've held off on that for a while. You know, there might be some creative solutions with solar panels on roofs that would be partially, you know, would help us to support, so it might not be a million dollars if we could do something like that, but it definitely needs a repair.
Thank you.
So we hold on another year with buckets? Possibly. But after that, not really.
And I, and I know you, I mean, you just stated buckets, there, you do deploy buckets to, to catch water?
Yeah, we've had to do that in some of our older schools. I mean, it, it really, you know, it's, it's tricky when the roofs get to this point.
Thank you.
Counsel Parker?
Okay. Just to confirm, you just said that the HVAC can come, oh, HVAC upgrades can come from your ARPA funds?
Right.
Okay. And two, I understand you guys get other grants, and I know one is somewhat flexible, your DODIA, is that the one that was flexible? Can that help?
The supplemental DODIA is really supposed to be for students, and so we have always used those funds for our technology mission, and certainly, we were very prepared, fortunately, when COVID hit. We were already one-to-one, thank you to the Department of Defense, you know, and utilizing, and it wasn't, you know, it was for, because we do host over a thousand students. We are the largest military community, school community, and we're actually hosting the northeastern regional DODIA folks here in about a month.
Okay, so...
So, you know, we utilize those really to meet the needs of our students educationally.
Since Charles Barnum is mainly a military school, military families, and it would be for the safety of the children, besides the technology, wouldn't it, certainly balance it off?
So ARPSER, I don't know how ARPA works as well as ARPSER, but ARPSER, I had to submit a plan back in the summer or in the fall. It had to be approved by the Connecticut State Department of Education. I am keeping track of all the data around those different buckets that we've used. And like I said, they're mostly for instructional purposes, but there was a section there that we were able to have for HVAC systems, and we are using them for that. But there's no going back and asking for roof. It's, I, it's not as flexible as it sounds like your ARPA funds are for the community.
Okay.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So for our budget, we gave an increase to the schools for $1.7 million, and then the CIPs are like 1.3, if you include the football field, which brings us to about approximately $3 million in total that the school's asking for increases this year. And that's one of the reasons why I made the cut to the athletic fields, also because of the other reasons. This roof, I think, is a priority. There are two other items coming up as well, but because I think the maintenance of our, our assets in our community, which are our buildings, should be maintained well. I'm not saying the football field shouldn't, but, and, and there are questions, like, have you repaired, like, gone up on the roof and repaired these? And I, I'm sure you have on numerous occasions, but...
Well, I haven't personally, but...
Not you personally?
Sam Kilpatrick is absolutely fabulous overseeing our facilities, and I know that they have done repair work along the way. Like I said, both the football field and the roof repair has been a request for the past several years, so I know that they've been doing work in between to just make things, you know, continue to go on.
I understand. But $3 million, I think, is, is just a lot of money for an increase here. And, and I do know in the past, you've come to us for a CIP, and, and you've been asked before you come, like, what is your biggest priority? And there's four items listed, and they're substantially large, and if not this year, they're, they're, even next year, could add some large dollars to the, to the account as well. And I'm sure there'll be other requests next year as well. So that's why, like, the football field is an issue, and, but the, I don't know, I'm, I struggle on the roof, and, because it's like, do you just, I, I don't want to push it down the road either, because, as I said, the future holds a lot of expenses as well. So I think I'm just going to vote in favor of the, this one, because I, I think we need to take care of our buildings, because we have seen what happens when we don't. Thank you.
Chair Shepperson-Watson?
I, I want to echo sort of what Counsel Franco said, is that the roof is past its 20-year life expectancy, and so it's not like we are requesting a roof that doesn't need to be repaired, as Superintendent Austin has talked about. It already has leaks, and we are trying really hard to keep our vintage buildings alive and well, so that it can serve our district and it can serve our community.
Counsel Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Superintendent Austin. Hello, Chair Watson.
Good evening.
I just wanted to point out that not only does Charles Barnum house our military students, but also that you utilize Charles Barnum for your summer camps. So the school is also utilized during the summer, which my children love those camps, so thank you very much.
Good.
And I just, I will be supporting this tonight. My children attend Northeast Academy, and there has been mold issues at Northeast Academy that we've had to take care of. So I, I think this is a really important thing to support tonight, so that we're not dealing with another school having to deal with mold, mold issues. Thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Superintendent Austin. Do you have a sense of how long it's past the 20-year life expectancy?
I don't have the exact number of how long, but I do know that there are problems with the roof, and I do have concerns about what happens when moisture gets into a building. And we've already had to do some, you know, some remediation in that school, like we did at Northeast and CK, so, you know, I just have concerns about it. And like I said, there's a way that we can build an efficiency when this goes out to bed, and you can do something green, and, you know, there could be something that we could propose and look for that would, you know, host solar panels on top of the roof that would be a cost of, you know, cost savings, and then in the long run, a cost savings. That would be good.
And just a second question, does the million dollars add to the MBR number?
No.
No.
Separate, separate number?
I think CIPs are separate.
They are.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Director Landry?
I just wanted to have a point of what I think is clarification for the funding that Counselor Parker was referring to was not, I don't believe that's your DODIA. I think it's just your DOD funding she was referring to.
Thank you.
Counsel McBride?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, it's clearly, this item is needed, that's apparent. However, I have concerns, as I mentioned before, about not making what I would consider to be substantial reductions in the capital request, and that we've already grabbed $2,101,500 from ARPA funds, which I, I, I don't think is, I'm not in full agreement with that, but in any event, I, it needs to be completed, but my thought is, is there a better way to, to do it? And we talked this week, and we've talked in the past, about the education... And we talked this week and we've talked in the past about the Education Capital Non-Recurring Fund. And what I would like to do is propose a zero for this with the intent that this council would try to move forward and set up that Education Capital Non-Recurring Fund. Because if that were to be set up, the Board of Ed would be incentivized to provide savings as of their end of the year 6/30/2022. And they should be able to probably have savings of a million dollars. That Capital Education Non-Recurring Fund could be used specifically for capital and maintenance items and therefore they would be incentivized to save the money. And they could use that money to fix this repair. And then it would be a win-win for both sides. So that's what I would like to put on the table. And I think it's a reasonable request that serves all of Grodd in the best financial interest. Thank you.
So I have a motion for zero, is there a second?
Second. Counselor Parker?
I cannot support the zero as we have been waiting for a couple of years to discuss that non, what Counsel McBride just said. And we do not have a plan in place for it. And I don't think we can have a plan by the end of the school year for it. Our council takes a little bit of time on items and I don't think it would be done in a timely manner to get this established for the school system. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Counselor Westerveld?
Could I ask Counselor McBride to say that again a little slower so that I understand exactly what you're talking about? I yield the floor to you.
Yeah, thank you. So numerous years ago, and I'm sure Town Manager Burt probably has more information than I do, but years ago, Connecticut enacted statutes that allowed municipalities to, to enact a capital, a fund for, for the Board of Education that if the municipality agreed to, any savings that they had from their budget, so let's say the budget of 100 million, they only recur 98 million, that $2 million, instead of dropping to the general fund of the, of the town, that money could be allocated to the Board of Ed to be used for maintenance and capital and other items. So you can make it, you can design it how you like. I know, and I've been involved with one where we, we allow the Board of Ed to take their funds and use it for capital and maintenance only. And it incentivizes the Board of Ed to, to save money instead of spending it all at the end of the year. I'm not saying they do that, but I've, you know, it has happened in the past. So it incentivizes them to, to generate savings and then use those savings for items such as this. So it's just a good, it's just, I think it's a good win-win for overall. I mean, there are some people who question, you know, should all the money go to the general fund instead? But in my, my belief is that the town or the city always has the responsibility of maintaining the buildings anyway. So that's, uh, that's in summary what it is. I have to, you know, answer any questions. But it's, it's a way to incentivize the school to save money and then use it for other purposes.
Is that something that could realistically happen this year?
Well, I was going to comment that it doesn't need to happen. I don't believe so. It, I don't think it has to happen by 6/30. I think it can happen later as long as you enact it and utilize those savings. But it can be, it can be done. I think it can be done exponentially, but I defer to Town Manager Burt on what, what he thinks.
I don't think it would take long to get the policy set up, but I was totally lost in a train of thought. I was about to say, so that's a point to make.
I don't think it would take long for the policy to be set up.
But at this point though, I guess I would question whether there's enough time for, to realize that kind of savings. I'm not sure there's time enough to incentivize them to put that kind of money away quickly on an urgent matter. I'm totally in favor of doing the, the, you know, there'll be lots of more projects to fund from in the future, but I'm not sure it works in time for this.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I would, um, it's sort of been on our referral list for years now and I thought it was a very complex situation to deal with this. That's why we haven't seen it because I thought it was very in-depth. So, um, and, and there's much that I don't know about it. I don't know if it's just savings is, and you may know more than I, because I obviously know nothing about it. But is it just savings from grants or is it savings from your MBR?
The savings from the general fund taxpayer support money, so whatever the budget is.
So it doesn't affect MBR?
It doesn't have any effect.
It's part of MBR.
It's, it's the whatever they have left in, you know, in, in the financial statement every, every year that we get it. You know, you have all your departments listed and the Board of Ed will have their, their number, whatever's left over. This document allows you to utilize that money. It's, it's, I mean, our document, I mean, it's two pages long, it's not complex at all.
Right, but if you don't spend your MBR basically, the city cuts you.
Well, the MBR is, my understanding, and they probably know more than I do, but my understanding of the MBR is the budget can't be, can't be decreased. So if the budget's 100 million issue.
Whether in the White's district, if you weren't, then, then there's some different rules.
Right, so if you came in quite far under your MBR.
Well, it doesn't affect your, MBR affects your future budgets. So it, it just affects your current.
I understand that, but if you, you say your MBR is a million dollars, just say, and you come in at, like, well below it, it's going to affect your MBR, isn't it?
It would become a separate, essentially a separate fund, just like their DOD fund or anything else where they could fund things out of, it wouldn't count, we wouldn't be giving them more money.
Let me just ask, why haven't they done this already then?
Well, first we have to set up the policy. Now, is that an ordinance or a policy?
Ordinance. Ordinance, council has.
It's going to be a bit of, it's going to take a while to get it placed, a few months.
Counsel has to.
Can I just add something for everybody's information? You know, I've been in the district since 2014 when Dr. Michael Grenier was our superintendent and came here. And there has never been that kind of money left over at the end of the year. As a matter of fact, if there's $100,000, we really are good stewards of the town's money. And we, we put back into health savings or in the OPEB. We really tried hard to be good citizens and pay off that OPEB bill. So it goes really directly to a place of responsibility. There's really, and that's probably, you know, I'm just saying $100,000, but I don't think there's ever been anything that much or any more than that. So, um, you know, I would say that we're pretty good stewards of the money and we budget carefully and we use those monies for what they're budgeted for. I do know that with Impact Aid, you've been very fortunate in Groddon, where we might have proposed that we would, you know, in the past, we would be getting $3 million from Impact Aid, but it's been coming into the town at $4.5 million. And that extra million and a half goes right to the town and does not go to education. So there are funding overages and grants that come to the town and don't come to the Board of Ed. So there might be some monies there that the, you know, that the town manager can look at.
That's just general, that's a general fund.
Yeah, that's understandable. That goes to the general fund and it's, it's basically an offset to your budget anyway because we've already funded your budget.
But these are additional, these are additional funds that were not in the budget. These are above and beyond.
Right, but we've already spent taxpayer dollars on your budget. So it's basically just repeats, like.
I, I know that, but I'm just saying that these were not accounted for in setting the budget. They were above and beyond. So, you know, it's.
Thank you.
A good thing for Groddon, I'm not saying anything, but I, I just wanted you to know, aware of that.
Understood, thank you. I, um, I don't think a lapsing fund is going to, like, as she, as the superintendent stated, is going to generate this kind of money and be able to cover that kind of, um, expense anytime too quickly. I mean, I'm for setting this up and investigating it as a town council, but, um, I don't know if that's going to solve our problem immediately. Thank you.
Director Landry?
I'd just like to add that when we did look at this a few years ago, Superintendent Austin is correct, the Board of Ed doesn't return significant amounts of money at the end of the year. So it would take considerable amount of time for them to build up a million dollars to do a roof. She is correct in that respect.
30,000 ish or?
Yeah, it's around 30,000.
Ballpark.
There have been many years when you fully expanded the budget, there's been no return.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent Austin, did you say earlier that you have already had to remediate some mold from the school?
Well, you had referred to the Northeast Academy situation where we were keeping a real close eye on the situation and we had to remedy it and have air quality testing done.
Right.
And that's happened in a few of the schools just as a proactive measure. But like I said, anytime there's moisture, we have concerns. So we know that we have to really be proactive.
Okay, I, I thought you had said that you had already had a mold situation at Charles Barnum, but.
Well, yeah, we've just been watching and monitoring it very carefully for sure.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, I, I cannot support waiting to fund a roof when we could potentially be subjecting little children to mold issues and moisture in the school. So I will not be supporting the zero, thank you.
Mayor, just, just to point out, you know, we don't meet in our regular room because of the moisture.
Exactly, thank you. If we can't subject the council to it, then, you know, thank you.
We're all very delicate. Very fragile.
Okay. See no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 5B and the amount of $0. Counselor Baumgartner?
No.
Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Westerveld?
No.
Melendez is a no, that fails two in favor, Jones, McBride. Six opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, so we are back to 5B, $1 million. Counselor, Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Abstain.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerveld?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes, that carries seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining, McBride. Make a motion for CIP 5B. The amount of $50,000.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Franco.
I'd like to put a new motion on the floor?
Yes.
I'd like to move zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion for $0. Moved by Parker. Seconded by Baumgartner?
Franco.
Okay.
I believe I asked the question and she said yes. Superintendent Austin did say that they use some of their funding money for HVAC systems. So I, I figured we can zero that out and it can come from their funding.
Is that correct Superintendent Austin? You can use some of your funds to fund this 50,000?
Yes, I could do that. As, as a matter of fact, one of the things that, you know, we have a certain amount of money. We've already spent some of it to get Fitch ready for the summertime. So their, you know, air system in the, in the part that was prioritized will be taken care of. I think the study will really help us to know what we need to do at the vintage side of Fitch and our, our Charles Barnum. And then the funds that we have probably won't repair everything, but at least will have guidelines of what we need to do. You know, and I've talked to John Bird about partnering in this initiative. So as soon as we get more information, we'll know what that will imply.
Okay, Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, I would note that the governor's proposed budget includes about $90 million for HVAC upgrades exclusively funded.
And we're going to go after whatever we can on that one.
Yes, and, and those funds.
But it'll be good to know what we need to do.
Absolutely, and, and those funds will come from the state's pool of ARPA funds. That was, uh, the governor determined he would, he would like to move in that direction a few months ago in large part because of the significant needs to, that, in, in school districts across the state to upgrade and improve our, really integrated and outdated HVAC systems. And so hopefully we can tap into those funds, you know, once we are ready to, to start construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see no further discussions, I'll call for a vote on CIP 5D and the amount of $0. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Westerveld?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes, that carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Make a motion for CIP 5E and the amount of $70,000. Is there a second?
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by John. Counselor Casiri?
I'd like to put another number on the floor.
Yes.
$0.
Second.
I have a motion for CIP 5B, $0. Moved by Casiri, seconded by Franco. Do you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I would love to support the culinary arts program, I just think we've had an increase of a million dollars for a roof and that this just needs to wait at this time.
Can I speak to this project?
Certainly.
In the long run? So back, you know, a decade or more ago, when Fitch was revitalized and our new section of Fitch was filled, the town had decided that they weren't going to take that extra cost on, on the vintage side. And we've, you know, been able to kind of move through, but that vintage side happens to be our career pathway for manufacturing, woodworking, culinary arts. And it, they've changed even in the past decade. So culinary arts was really like consumer science and, you know, learning to bake pancakes and biscuits. And, and now it's taken on really a career look. And you think about where we are in southeastern Connecticut, it's certainly a vital career for many of our students to choose. And we really wanted to take this to classrooms and, and make it like a restaurant and have restaurant-grade equipment. We have put in for Perkins Grant, which is helping us to do that. But this study is really critical in helping us to determine how we can really adjust these classrooms and, and really have more students. We have students who are waiting lists, who never get a chance to take this pathway because there's just not enough room and ability. We have two certified teachers in the program who were chefs in their own right. And they've actually taken kids to competitions and won competitions. So it's really, I think, a vital career pathway that I'm looking forward to really, um, you know, enriching and, and making more accessible to kids. So while it's a, a study and a plan to really rebuild these two classrooms so that they are state of the art, I know that there's been some suggestion that Ross and Heck has culinary arts, but we have a large number of students at Fitch, over 1,000, who want to go to Fitch High School and they want to have access to not only college, but careers. So we're really trying to do, um, you know, a job to encourage kids to take some of those upper-level classes, come out with a certificate in nursing and, you know, other fields and really make them more workforce-ready. So, um, you know, I just wanted you to see the big picture that I see for our students. And it definitely is an area that needs to be considered, whether it's this year or next year into the future.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent. So do you have an idea of how many students would like to do this out of your 1,000 students?
So I think the capacity is probably about 300 students a year, but I would say, um, we have over 100 or 200 that, more that really want to take it.
And is there any, have you looked at the possibility of partnering with Grosso Tech next door and they take part of their education or the, the required classes?
We're actually already doing that. We're starting with a, um, a course that's multimedia broadcasting and our students will be able to get credit at Grosso after school. Um, it makes for a long day for kids, you know, if they start at 7:30 in the morning and go till 5:00 at night, but some who may not choose, um, you know, a club or a band or a sport, may be interested in gaining that credit. But right now, it's really based on what the, um, the techno, the tech schools are offering. So we are partnering, we're starting small with this broadcasting. It's something that we do really well at the middle school with the, with the green screen. I think you actually saw that on the tour. And we're even looking to see how we can, you know, incorporate that, that to the high school, because we're really looking at those pathways, career pathways, from elementary, middle school and high school and getting that information to students and parents.
So if you're already sort of doing this with some of the, the media kids, it is possible that you could partner at the beginning of a limited program of culinary students at the grass, at Grosso Tech and, and maybe we just, we look at moving this into the next year or the year after.
It will, it will suffice for a handful of students, maybe 20 students, but when you're talking about hundreds of students who go to Fitch and want to take those programs, that would never be, you know, the partnership is awesome, but it would never suffice for the, um, the needs of all of our students who want to take it.
That's right. No, but I'm just thinking of just the culinary students, so it, it's not a whole on, full-on, you know, exchange program, it's just taking one group, so. All right. Thank you.
Right, right.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes. Um, I do have a question regarding the cost of the study. Um, you proposed allocating 75 thou, I'm sorry, 70,000 for the preliminary plans. Um, is, how did you arrive at that number?
So, um, it was Samuel Patrick who put that out to see what an estimate would be for that, and I think he might have, um, worked with the group SLAM that actually built our middle school or with the architects for the middle school, so he got an estimate from them.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to utilize ARPA funds to fund this project, uh, this, for 70, 70,000.
Is there a second? Um, I'll second that. $70,000. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Melendez. CIP 5E. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, yes. Um, I for one, um, have no qualms utilizing ARPA to benefit, um, the youth of Groton. Clearly, there is an interest, I believe, for a board of, you know, a couple hundred kids at the very, at the bare minimum who are interested in such a program. Um, and, you know, 70,000 in the whole scheme of things is not a very large amount, considering it, it could be, um, you know, it could, it could benefit a large number of, of our young, young folks here in Groton. As the superintendent mentioned, uh, it is a, could be a potential pathway in the town. It's an opportunity that is really only afforded to kids who do go to Grosso, and the reality is there are so many kids in Groton who don't go to Grosso that go to Fitch that, um, would be interested in such a program, and, and so, um, I will be supporting this motion and ask counselors to do, do the same. Thank you.
Counselor Westerveld?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent Austin, is this just for the study? This doesn't include any renovations or any actual building? It's just to study the feasibility of doing this?
That's the, that is the study which you need to figure out. And like I said, we did use some Perkins funds, which is another grant that comes our way for, um, this particular type of, you know, career pathway. And so that, we have been able to purchase some of the equipment, but we need the study and then we need to figure out what is it involved, construction-wise.
Thank you.
To kind of refab those two classrooms and make them, um, you know, instead of kitchens, they would be restaurants.
Counselor McBride, did you have a hand?
I, I was going to say something before the motion, just that I think this is a wonderful opportunity to move things forward and it sounds very interesting. I just think this year is not, not the time that we can move forward and incur those additional costs, so supportive of the plan, I just, I can't support, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call-
If I could just say that a step forward would be to get the plan done and then we could take another step, maybe in the next year, I'd certainly put Perkins funds towards it for some of the equipment and then, um, we could follow through the following with the building.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on CIP 5E and the amount of 70,000 utilizing ARPA funds. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor McBride?
No.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Westerveld?
No.
Melendez is a yes, so that fails. Um, two in favor, Melendez, Baumgartner, six opposed, zero abstaining. So on to CIP 5E and the amount of $0. Counselor Baumgartner?
No.
Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Abstain.
Counselor Westerveld?
Abstain.
Melendez is a no. So this fails. Four in favor. Two opposed, Melendez, Baumgartner, two abstentions, Parker, Westerveld.
Fails.
Fails.
I'll make a motion to table.
We have one more motion on the floor, 70,000 out of capital reserve. Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor McBride?
No.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Westerveld?
No.
Melendez is a yes. This fails. Two in favor. Melendez, Baumgartner. Six opposed, zero abstaining.
Make a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
The 70,000 failed?
Yeah.
So why are we tabling it?
Uh, for the same reasons we tabled the, um, the other-
This has got the prevailing votes. There's more no's than yeses. That's not going to change the vote.
How do you mean?
Six of us said no to the 70,000.
Right. But zero, but zero failed as well.
We said no to 70,000. Six of us said no.
Right.
Two of you said yes.
Right.
So it doesn't, it-
It passed.
It passed at, we didn't, it doesn't go through.
The other one didn't pass.
Passes with no funding.
Yep.
Well, I think it's like the last time where, where-
No. The last time was-
Last time only had four votes.
Four votes.
You were locked.
We were locked.
Yeah, but even in tie, it's a fail.
Right, they could make another motion. Correct. The other time it failed because they didn't have five.
The last one was four, three.
They didn't have five. That made it fail. Now they have a six.
No, but the motion wasn't for zero, though.
No, this is for, yeah, this is for 70,000. He asked, you asked for 70,000. Two of you said yes. Six of us said no to 70,000.
So the no's won.
No's won.
Well, we can, we can simply do the vote to-
No.
We can, that can go down.
No, we can't. We have the prevailing, there's more than five votes for the prevailing.
It didn't fail. The no's won.
The no's won. There's no, no reconsidering this number. There's more people that voted against it than-
Okay.
So the motion on the floor was for 70,000 from capital improvement.
Right.
But it was-
But, okay, I understand what you're saying.
Six said no and two said yes.
That also happened on the first vote as well. 70,000 for ARPA. Two in favor, six opposed. That didn't automatically make it zero.
Yes, but you went to the next motion.
Okay.
You went to the next amendment.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I just don't see how it's different because technically someone could just make another motion now.
No, it's done. It failed.
It failed.
Uh, I'll take direction from, from-
It failed, but anything else fails. Or it wins, like everything else. You can't just keep tabling things because you don't like the vote. It's just done.
No, but my only point is, we voted on zero.
Well, then we can, we can vote on table and it failed.
Zero didn't pass either. So to say that zero failed and then 70,000 failed and then that's the zero.
We voted on 70, coming from capital, capital reserve and-
Which is the main motion, was the original main motion.
The motion failed.
I think this should be tabled and we should find out what the answer is.
We need to vote on the table.
Why don't we vote on, why don't we vote on one of these again, then? How about we vote on zero again? Because there are two people that abstained, maybe they'll change their mind.
That's true.
I'll make a motion for zero.
Have a motion for CIP 5E and the amount of zero?
I don't think you can do that.
You can do it unless you're going to fight it.
No, you cannot. You have to have, you have to do it from the range between zero and 70, because then it's a frivolous vote if you bring zero back. You, remember in RTM?
If you're going to fight it, though.
And tabling it, it's not going to work, how, so.
Yeah, the motion already passed. The other one didn't pass 5A because we didn't have the majority.
No, it failed 4, like, 4-3-1, but it's still a fail. The thing is, we're, we're past, the 70's on the floor and the vote is two yeses, six no's. So no, the no's have it. That's how I look at it. Anyway, we have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Are you going to recognize it or not? So we can move along?
Because it's almost 11.
Mayor?
Waiting for direction.
Oh, they're waiting for your direction.
What, past practice, what has happened?
If you didn't have, if you didn't have the other motions and you just had a vote for any project at $70,000 and you voted 6-2-0, what would happen?
It would fail.
It would fail. You don't need a zero vote for it to fail. But I think we're getting hung up on because we had those other two motions.
Okay.
You, you voted, those two voted down and now you're back to the main motion and it failed.
Okay.
Rescind my motion.
Okay. So 5E is zeroed out.
Yes.
Then the football field should be zeroed out as well.
The football field was the, the distinction-
It's the same concept, exact same concept. It still failed when it came down to the bottom, the bottom number.
No. No. Because, one, two.
If we have a motion on the table, I mean, if we have a motion out there and it's the, the only motion on the table, not with amendments, and we, and it gets voted, um, 4-3-1, it fails no matter what.
Can you-
We have, we already had a motion, point of information, we already had a motion to table and it passed. So that's, it's, the, the decision was already made.
The distinction was that-
Well, because there was also incorrect information, I think.
Well, that, that's a story for another day, but, so, yeah, I would-
It should have been a motion to reconsider.
Yeah.
Not a motion to table, because you can't table, it was already, it was already done.
No, because of the way it fell, because technically my abstention causes it to balance out as another.
It's still a fail. It's still a fail.
It's still a fail.
That's why, that's why-
It doesn't matter what the vote is, if it fails, it fails.
Yeah, you can reconsider it.
I believe on the, on the, um, 5A, because the final vote was 4-3-1. Oh, sorry, was it 3-4-1?
3-4-1.
The discussion was you needed five in favor to pass it.
Pass it.
That's why you decided to-
Table it.
Table it. Um, because you didn't think you were going to be able to get another vote that was going to get five either way, yea or nay. But it failed. You said you needed a tiebreaker, so that's why you tabled it.
That's why I said it was fine when it did this.
Somebody else wanted a tiebreaker.
The distinction here is that-
From point of order.
On 5A, no side ever got five.
Yes.
And in 5E, a side had gotten five or more, so therefore it fails.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm good with that. Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, no, no.
Motion to recess. Motion to recess.
We are recessed at 10:46.